Welcome to Boulder City City Council this August 27th. Appreciate everybody being here. Call the meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, confirmation and post leader call.
Thank you. The City Council Agenda was posted in accordance with Nevada Open Meeting Law, and all members are present.
Thank you. We will now rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. We will have the invocation given by Carlton Chaplain, Carlton Fog of our State Chaplain, DFW Department of Nevada Post Commander, Post 36.
Your own 36. Please join me in prayer. Gracious Father, thank you for bringing us all here today. Father, I ask that you be with us as we do what's good for this great city. Keep everybody here with their minds clear and good decision makings. Watch over the citizens of Boulder City and all the people here, and ask, give them knowledge, comfort, so this council can make right decisions for them. And I ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. You can join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public announcements? And we will now open the first period of public comment. People who are here on the phone line will be welcome to come forward from here and take up to five minutes if you would like, or less. And go ahead and come forward, and we'll tell people if they want to call in, they can call 702-589-9629.
Good evening, everyone. City Council, our wonderful City Council. I'm Dr. Valerie McNee, and I've been, I love Boulder City, been here 30 years, and I want to talk about on Agenda Item Number 13 regarding the City Council Appointments on the Historic Preservation Commission. And I wanted to endorse Ray Turner. I'm sure everyone knows Ray. Ray is extremely well qualified and experienced, and he's really given so much to this community. And so I just want to list some of the things I'm sure you know already, but, you know, he's previously served on two terms on that Boulder City Historic Preservation Commission. And he was on the committee that drafted the Historic Preservation Ordinance, Boulder City. He was instrumental in efforts to save the original Boulder City Hospital. And he is currently the President of the Boulder City History and Arts Foundation, where Ray helps organizations and supports historic preservation themes, events all the time. And he filed an appeal to stop the demolition of the historic Browder Building, which is now, of course, you know, the Damn Rose House Browder Bookstore, which we love. You know, he helped secure $50,000 donation from, I think it's copper, is that right, roofing, the one that restored the roof on the Boulder City Water Filtration Building. And then they used the, I think, also they used the tiles, the old tiles, remember, for a special event for artists to put artwork on, an art project, and arranged it, and had it, he had, and someone on the side even, not just from all historic stuff he does, but he does BC's Got Talent, and he organizes that, and performances at the short form festivals, musical performances at the historic Department of Water Power Building over where Emergency Aid is. And he puts on the annual Christmas dinner, which is heartwarming. And so I don't, I don't know how many people are up for this position, this opening position, but I believe he'd be one of the best to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you can. You're being followed, too.
Roseanne Rabiot-Lemille, just in case anybody was wondering, I did move out of Boulder City for a little while, but I'm back. I came back April 15th, and on April 17th, I changed my voter registration. Anyway, I just want to say regarding item number four, in order to save water, save money, why don't we simply take out the grass so that we don't have to raise greens fees? You know, save money, save water, take out all the grass that you need, so you don't have to go back and do it again, and you don't have to pay a fine. That's all I have to say about that. And regarding item 13, Ray Turner is like such a guy. You know what's a mensch? A mensch is like a real person, even though he's Irish. Right? Everything that Ray's actions speak a bazillion times louder than even I could yell. So Ray's the guy, okay? He cares about the town. He's in love with the water filtration plant. He does above and beyond. And that's all I have to say. He's a mensch. The end.
Thank you. Please come forward, and if you're going to call in, call 702-589-9629.
Hello. Okay. Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff, my name is Norma Valley, and I'm here to comment on Agenda Number 13, City Council Appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission. I've submitted an application for this appointment a couple of months ago, and I'd like to take this opportunity to highlight some of my qualifications and my passion for this position. My family's home back in Brooklyn, New York, is 100-year-old beauty, and my renovations in this house are what instigated my career in home improvement. For several years, I professionally renovated homes in the New York tri-state area, many of which were brownstones and Victorian houses. Those experience helped launch my television career, where I hosted makeover shows on Discovery Home Channel, most notably Four Seasons of Toolbelt Diva, I Am the Toolbelt Diva, and I'm honored to say that my show was nominated for an Emmy. Through this TV series, I taught women in cities around the country how to take on renovation projects in their homes. I'm also published author of three books in the DIY genre, and I've penned several columns and articles in magazines online, and I currently and proudly hold a monthly column in our local newspaper, Boulder City Review, called Home Matters. For the past 12 years, I live in the Alphabet Street section of Boulder City, in a house built in 1941. Twice a year, I'm back in Brooklyn personally repairing or spearheading renovation projects in my family's century-old house, uniquely a Spanish colonial revival. Suffice to say, I am very intimate with the challenges and passion to preserve the historical value of these types of homes. I also lived in France for six years, and actually just came back from a magnificent stay in the Puglia region of Italy. I intimately know the importance these countries place in preserving their nation's architectural and historic legacy. Switching gears, another area of experience that I have, that I know would be beneficial to HPC, are my years spent as the event coordinator of a large theme restaurant in Rockefeller Plaza. There, I organized events, large and small, from fashion shows, corporate galas, and Christmas parties, to Sweet Sixteens. Additionally, I have experience in marketing, creatives, and social media. Because of these combined skills and experience, I humbly state that I know I would serve as a powerful asset to the HPC. Events like awareness campaigns, contests, educational tours, all things related to promoting historic preservation efforts are right up my alley. One of the things that made me fall in love with Boulder City is its rich history. We truly are a genuine piece of historic Americana. We must maintain, preserve, and promote the significance of our historic district. Our historic district is the core, the heart, and soul of our city. It's what links us to our bold and beautiful past and what must behoove us to safeguard it for our residents and visitors today and for all generations to come. It would be my absolute honor and privilege to be appointed to the HPC. When the time comes, I ask that you please consider appointing me with confidence and trust that I will be the right choice to serve with these esteemed members of such an important and truly essential commission. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else here would like to come forward in public comment? Please do. No one on the phones? Okay. So why don't you go to the phone? Go ahead and sign in. We're going to take a phone call, and then you.
Public comment?
Good evening, Council. Fred Volz for the record. Regarding Agenda Item 4A, the four proposals for water use at the municipal golf course provide some alternatives, but they need to be improved upon. It is unacceptable to kill mature trees in favor of retaining more turf. The turf on golf course fairways needs further reduction if that water is needed to adequately water mature trees, and the final option that keeps 94 acres of turf. It does not matter if golfers pay excess water fines. The end goal is to reduce our overall water consumption as a city and do our part to live with Mother Nature's water confines as desert residents. We need rough cost estimates on the differences between the four options before sending any of them out for bid. Most important, we need both city golf courses to become enterprise funds and be charged retail commercial water rates for their water consumption, not the city's wholesale rate. Chargebacks for equipment, labor, administrative support, and capital costs such as golf courses, golf carts are also needed. As for Agenda Item 5A, no overall price tag has been ascribed to the long overdue and underwhelming water conservation projects at city facilities in the PowerPoint presentation. Similarly, missing are the annual gallon reductions and the sources of funding to accomplish these projects, and a completion timeline. Particularly disturbing is the liberal mention of SNWA waivers, as if Boulder City should be given special consideration over other jurisdictions with no real justification for noncompliance. Nothing in AB 356 limits Boulder City from going beyond its statutory provisions, including removal of private lawns in the front and possibly backyards of residences. As you are well aware, Boulder City uses far more water on a per capita basis than any jurisdiction in the Las Vegas Valley. Boulder City clearly isn't doing its part. No mention has been made of any reductions in Veterans Memorial Park, despite two significant areas of nonfunctional turf due south of the newer Dog Park and west of the Skateboard Park area. Do we really need the great lawn to be so large? How much utilization do the irrigated softball, baseball fields at Hemman Way, Veterans Memorial, and Wayland Field experience, and can't some of those fields be eliminated without impacting recreation? Minimal turf reductions at expansive Hemman Way Park are also lost opportunities for saving water. Boulder City needs to go back to the drawing board and come up with substantially more water cuts than in the presentation. Finally, you have two exceptionally strong candidates for the historic preservation positions. Ray Turner's extensive knowledge, accomplishments, and involvement in historic preservation, the arts, and preserving our city's history is unmatched by any of the other applicants. He works exceedingly well with others and has a strategic mind that will advance saving our most important buildings. Without these buildings, Boulder City loses the uniqueness-making in an attractive residential and tourist destination. In a completely different way, Bryn de Lormier brings the experience of renovating historic buildings from her time spent in several cities around the United States. Hers is an unusual perspective that would advance the cause of Boulder City's historic preservation. Please add these comments verbatim to the official minutes of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Staff. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be here or not, because I'm currently on the HPC Commission, but maybe I have to save my space, so I just wanted to tell you that I enjoyed being on HPC. I enjoyed the Historic Preservation Commission Day that we had. I'm getting ready to do a Nevada test site tour to see the train that's going to be coming down to the museum here. I'm active in Boulder City, been here 19 years after retiring from the Air Force. I am currently part of the Pride and Purity International Ministry, the Boulder City Lions Club, Boulder City Development Group, Calvary Chapel Boulder City is my church home, Boulder Rifle and Pistol Club, Boulder City Chamber of Commerce, Boulder City Elk's Lodge, the Southern Nevada Veterans Home, I'm a board member there. I also do the biggest, one of the biggest events in Boulder City is Reith Across America. I am the coordinator for that, for Boulder City, or for this area. And Operation Christmas Child, where we send, well, last year, seven million packages around the world to children. I, again, don't know if I have to secure my position, but I'd like to put my name back in the hat. I am running for City Council, so if that should happen, I know I would have to vacate that position, but until then, I'd like to stay on the commission with your permission. Thank you.
So while you're there, you may want to say your name to everybody.
Everybody knows me, Mayor. I'm Denise Ashurst.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. And anyone here in the room like to come forward? Go ahead. No one else on the phone line?
Good evening, Staff and Council, and thanks for allowing me to speak on Agenda Item 4, which is the Golf Course Turf Reduction and Irrigation Replacement, and also Agenda Item 5, Addressing Nonfunctional Turf on City Property. So I'm just going to go ahead and read the statement that I already submitted for the record on golf turf replacement. My name is Randy Lemos. I live in the Lewis Homes Golf Course Community at 1570 Turnberry Court, and I'm a 30-year resident of Boulder City. I am writing about my concerns with the golf course turf removal and sprinkler replacement project that will be discussed at today's City Council meeting. My understanding is that the council will be considering the plan that was presented and discussed at the 7/15/24 public meeting, and a new plan that was developed after the 7/15 meeting, based on citizen feedback at the meeting. I was unable to attend the 7/15 meeting, but I did submit comments to the city for that meeting. The plan presented at the 7/15 meeting removes substantially more turf than the newest plan. It also called for the removal of many trees that are either, and I quote, "dead, in poor condition, or are hazardous." The newest plan mostly removes about a 10-foot section of turf at the housing fence line in areas where the turf is right up against the housing walls. Actually, this should have been done a long time ago, as irrigation watering lawn up to the walls of the golf course homes has substantially damaged the walls and has destroyed the wrought iron fencing on the walls at considerable cost expense to the homeowner. Of course, this is a project long overdue, which I fully support. My concern is that the new plan does not remove the turf that is not necessary for golf course usage. The original plan also removed a lot of turf in playable areas on the golf course, such as around the tee boxes, that normally are not hit into by golfers. I understand why homeowners do not want any turf removed, as watering that turf daily in the summer cools the backyards of the homes next to the course, including my home. I also understand that the city has a legal right to remove this turf, and only, the only thing stopping the council from doing so is political pressure from the golf course community. Here are my concerns. Does the new plan remove enough turf to meet the allowable water available per acre as required or suggested by the SNWA? My understanding is that any water used over the allotment per acre costs considerably more per thousand gallons, this being a type of punishment for using too much of our precious water unnecessarily. If the new plan is utilized, and we go over our allotment, and if we are fined, how much more per year will it cost the city to water the course, and how will that increase be paid? Also, if the new plan is utilized, will the new irrigation system be designed to accommodate further turf removal if the drought worsens and further turf removal is required? I was also concerned about removing too many trees per the original plan. I play the golf course regularly, and although some big trees have small dead sections, it appears to me that most trees are still healthy and can remain for decades, as yearly, a small portion of the tree dies. Dead sections can be removed at a small cost as needed, as the cost of removing the big trees is very substantial. I also have never really seen any damage to homeowners' property from the roots of these trees, and if there is some damage, I would think it would be remedied by the city at a minimal cost. Root removal is also very manageable cost-wise versus tree removal. These large trees define our beautiful golf course and its uniqueness, as well as giving homeowners valuable shade in their backyards. As far as dead trees, I support, fully support removing them. As far as trees that have been deemed hazardous, the city should have removed these trees as soon as that was determined, and I see very few trees that, in my opinion, are hazardous. In closing, my overall concern is that we, as stewards of this Vegas Valley, should be doing all we can to reduce water consumption. When we run out of water, there will not be a golf course. The way I see it, the city has a responsibility to be water-wise in many ways, such as reducing unnecessary turf on our golf courses, removing other unnecessary turf in the city, such as the turf along the drainage ditch going down the road to the lake, and somehow, hopefully very soon, utilizing the 1 million-plus gallons of water the city dumps into the desert every day. Thank you. Randy Lemos, Concerned Citizen, former member of the Golf Course Greens Committee, and current member of the City Utility Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on the phone? Anyone else here in the room who'd like to come forward in public comment on anything related to items on the agenda? Seeing none, we will close public comment and move to approval of the regular agenda.
Move to approve the regular agenda?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is unanimous. Thank you. And then, for possible action, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It has been approved. That brings us to the regular agenda, presentation number four on our agenda. Mr. Poindexter and company?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Gary Poindexter, Public Works Director. Item number four is regarding the Golf Course Turf Reduction Irrigation Replacement Project. Staff has been working with Lays Design to create options for the turf reduction and irrigation replacement at the municipal golf course. And following the July 15th open house, a 10-foot plan was put together, including turf removal and replacement with artificial turf on the driving range, along with irrigation and maintenance practice adjustments to do what we can, will do what we can to meet the council-approved resolution for water conservation that was approved on March 26, 2024. We have Mr. Jeffrey Schafler from Lays Design to provide the presentation of the 10-foot plan, and after the presentation, staff is seeking discussion and directive with selecting the final turf reduction and irrigation replacement option. I'll turn it over to Jeffrey.
Thanks, Gary. Mayor, Council Members, I think the presentation should be up there. Subsequent to us, the last time we were in front of you, earlier this year, we've actually held two public meetings since then. I'm happy to say both were very well attended. We actually received online on our surveys nearly 140 responses, to include with others that were received via email, and those that were written on comment forms we had at both meetings. Again, to give you an overview of what we were retained to do and the project... Next slide? Does this one work? It involves turf reduction along the, within the confines of the municipal golf course, replacement of the nearly 50-year-old irrigation system. Does it work? And removal of any dying or dead trees in the turf removal areas only. I can't emphasize that enough. We are not out there to remove trees haphazardly. It's only if they are dead or dying and in areas that are scheduled for turf to be removed, that are in those areas of turf removal. And then, if we have an opportunity to take advantage of the SNWA rebate program, we will certainly do that as well. So in the interest of just refreshing you on this, the existing conditions there, there's 133 acres of irrigated turf now. By 2023's numbers that were used, there were 6.3 acre-feet per acre used, which equates to 270 million gallons. So that's where we are currently, and we're looking to obviously reduce that. Subsequent to the first meeting, the first public meeting, we came back with another plan, which reduced the turf acreage by 39 acres, left us with 94 acres of irrigatable turf, which also got us to 499 acre-feet, we estimate would be used, of 489 acre-feet of total water would need to be used to irrigate this. The, all this turf was taken away in areas that were out of play. It did not affect the playability of the golf course, and also the driving range, and turf was removed, obviously, from, as we'll show, the perimeter of the golf course as well, along the property lines. Subsequent to that meeting, and working with city staff, we created another plan, which removes plus or minus 10 feet from the perimeter of the golf course around the property lines, and replacing the driving range with artificial turf, which is important to mention. As opposed to letting that remain DG, it improves operations from not having to replace balls and pickers and all that as much. It's a safer condition. This leaves 121 acres of the original 133, and we estimate would use approximately 642 acre-feet total. The budget that we are working with of water is 532 acre-feet, which is four acre-feet per acre at the existing 133 acres of irrigable turf. From all those options, we... From all those options, we get, you can go to the next slide. We've together this matrix, which does a comparison of all the options. I won't go into too much detail on this. I'm not going to read everything, but again, without doing anything or just replacing the irrigation system, we're still irrigating 133 acres. We estimate that would go down from using 830 acre-feet of water without doing anything to 706, which is the, which is just based on the efficiency of the new irrigation system. If we take away the 10, the 10 feet and the driving range, it's estimated this time that that would use 642 acre-feet of water. And if we use the previous one, which reduced it to 94 acres, the estimate based on the efficiency of the new irrigation system and maintenance practices would get us down to 499 acre-feet of water. It's important to note that the more turf you reduce, the more water you can use on the irrigatable, on the irrigated turf, and the better the condition of the golf course would be, if you're going to stay within the water budget of 532 acre-feet. As we move forward, you know, this evening, we're looking for directions so we can move forward on final design, which is what would be the next step after this. And our goal is to be able to advertise this for bid within the first quarter, hopefully in February, actually, of 2025, to begin construction in the second quarter of 2025. Please, Mayor, June.
Any questions?
Questions?
Yes. And this might not be for you, it might be for somebody else on staff. Let's, for the benefit of everybody here, go through what the golf course water budget is in layman's terms and how that came about and why we're doing it according to that water budget. Is that for you, Gary? Can you answer all that?
I might want to.
I can answer the first part. I can answer the first part, definitely.
Okay, well, let's get it all.
So, the water budget was based on what has been established. It was 6.3 acre-feet established by the SNWA, went down to 4 acre-feet, and that is, you get budgeted based on what you currently have before, if you were to do any turf reduction. So, that's basically just 4 times 133. So, that's where the 532 acre-feet comes from. In layman's term, an acre foot, I don't want to, is basically just the amount of water that would cover an acre one foot high.
No, we don't have to go through that. But here's the point. 4 acre-feet per irrigable acre per year.
Correct.
Right? That's what we're talking about. And we currently have, without any turf reduction, 133 irrigable acres.
Correct.
Right? So, that equals currently, if we were to do nothing right now, 532 total acres, irrigable acres, right? Or acre-feet. I'm sorry, 532 acre-feet.
Correct.
Right? So, if we just did the math, and I hope you did it, because I've got my calculator here, but if we just take 133 times 4, what's that?
532.
530. Okay, so that is the, times 4.
That's where it comes from. Correct.
Okay. So, we've already done that. So, we're using well more than 532 acre-feet per year on the golf course right now.
Correct. And that's mostly due to the irrigation system and it not being very efficient and not being able, the superintendent's not being able to have the control they need to apply the water as efficiently as possible.
Okay, and that's what's kind of been part of the mantra, the entire conversation here, is that we can save a great deal, and we don't know exactly how much until we do the upgrade, right?
Correct.
And then, we start to do the course management, keep the turf in the condition that it needs to be, right? And then, we'll know, based on the metering, exactly, just from updating the irrigation system, how much we could save if we were to do no turf removal in conjunction with that, right?
Correct. However, if you don't do any turf removal...
I'm not suggesting we do. I'm just making the statement, all right?
Yeah.
So, we're in agreement with that.
Correct.
Okay, fair enough. So, the water budget was adopted in August, if I'm not mistaken, of 2022 by ordinance by Boulder City. So, this is not SNWA exclusively. These were the recommendations, among many others, from SNWA for communities to adopt, which others were adopted at the same time for our community, but this golf course water budget now resides by ordinance for Boulder City, as adopted by the city council in August of 2022, if my date is correct. I could be off by a little bit, but Gary, did you have...
I had mentioned March 23rd.
March, okay, March.
So...
Okay, in there, March, yeah. In 2022, right? So, it's been, and that's why we're having this, part of the reason why we're having the conversation. It's not just SNWA, it's by ordinance in Boulder City, right? So, then, when we talk about removing the perimeter and doing additional appropriate landscaping within their, the Water Smart plans and so forth, that total use is going to take us down to not quite 532, right? We're going to go above that by a certain amount, anticipated.
So, the 532 is the goal.
Right.
The more, the more turf you reduce, the easier it is going to be to get to that number, if the concern is the amount of water.
So, if I look at the presentation, the slide for 10-foot perimeter removal, plus the driving range, we're looking at 642 rather than 532.
Correct.
So, getting pretty close in our estimated, right?
Totally estimated, absolutely.
And we're not entirely certain, you know, how that'll be close. We'll know after a season, right, or a year's worth of use, what that actually is going to equate to.
Correct.
And Gary, can you comment on the, the sections of the irrigation system update so that if further modifications are required, how the irrigation update will fit into that plan if necessary?
Yes. Yes. So, initially, part of the irrigation design will not just include sprinkler heads, valves, but also a control system. Currently, it's been, this isn't on the golf course superintendent, this is what they have that's available. It's, the new system would be running off ET evapotranspiration, so it would go off weather stations. It would be automatic. It wouldn't, you know, of course, they'd monitor it, but they would not have to adjust it on a regular basis. The other part of that is, and I'll get to your, I know where you're...
That's fine, go ahead.
Other part of that is, right now, we do not have valve and heads. So, to fix a dry spot over here, we're watering this entire area to fix this dry spot. Third part of that is, with the irrigation design, we would incorporate some of the other areas, if needed, that we can convert those into, at a different time, at a later date, if needed. So, we would definitely include that in the design. We would, direction of what we could do with those areas, we'd work with the homeowners on that, if that time comes.
Okay. So, we can, in the future, if we don't meet the goal as close as we'd like to, or exactly, remove additional turf where we might think, no, that's the least functional, right? Some specific areas, I think anybody that's golfed on there could probably identify some of those larger areas. However, there are some benefits. It's not like turf in and of itself, if it's not being, you know, golfed on, is entirely non-functional. There are some, you know, erosion control opportunities that occur there, flood control, right, in some of those areas to reduce maybe the speed and the volume of runoff. So, it's not entirely non-functional in some of these areas that are not golf utilized, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, the trees, as you had already said, dead or dying, right? And we have our arborists, who are experts in knowing, who will do the study on the trees if they're viable or not, right?
And we did have an arborist come in at the beginning of...
Correct. We have an arborist report currently that includes all the trees that are in the area that were deemed for removal, for turf removal previously, so even a larger area. So, we have more, even more data on trees than we might need, depending on which option we select.
Okay.
Yeah, we do not plan on, I want to speak, Jeffrey mentioned it, but the idea is not to take any trees out that do not need to be taken out. I know at one time, Cotton Woods were brought up, we are not, right now, it's dead or dying, and the goal is, if we can add some, that'd be great.
Yeah, and not, and to that point also, we will, in the design, anticipate any possible attrition that might happen in those areas of turf removal for trees and plant preemptively to kind of fill in in that area, plus there's monetary benefits to that from the rebate.
Okay. So, to restate what you just said, where some trees may have to come out because of turf removal, we're looking at planting trees in their places and irrigating them appropriately for the cooling, the shade, the protection of the homes, as well as additional, or to make sure that we take advantage of the rebate, because when you cover a certain amount of square footage with foliage or a bush or a tree of some sort, that is considered area that can receive the rebate.
That is correct. You need to do, you need to come in with 50% coverage for the areas that you take out, but you also get rebate, I believe it's $150 for every tree you plant, too.
Rebate of 150 trees for every tree you plant. Thank you for adding that.
So, additional.
I think this will be my final question for now, until I let others take a stab at you. We're talking about the rebate. How will that be applied in the project, right? So, we're going to receive a bid and, you know, pay a contractor to do the work. Is the rebate coming back to the city, and are we going to manage the rebate application process and all that? If you could talk about that, please.
Yes, we'll be managing the rebate process, along with our other turf reduction projects we're looking at. We'd be doing the same thing, follow in-house.
So, we'll be looking at reducing our overall costs by virtue of receiving rebate funding from the project.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I've got for now.
Thank you. Councilman Mabuth.
Well, Steve, you did such a great job. You asked all my questions, except for one. On the artificial turf, some of the golf courses I've seen where there's a lot of blow in from the desert, that that turf fills up with a lot of dirt. Is there a way of getting rid of that now? Is that, so that's not an issue any longer?
No. So, this is going to sound a little contrary, but whenever we design, using artificial turf, whether it's a ball field or anything else, we actually design an irrigation system with it. So, we have to use that. It's just quick couplers, so they can clean it, cool it, do all that, so they can put a hose into it and do all that, but that, part of that is taking care of that.
That answers the question.
Yep.
Thank you. That's my last question.
Councilman Jorgensen.
Thank you. So, just to clarify, the dying trees will be removed in the turf reduction area, but also on the course itself?
Right now, it's only scheduled to be in areas that are being, where turf is being removed.
So, we'll leave the dying trees?
If there's something that's in, there's not that many that we saw. I can think of one, actually, I've thought my head along 12. But, yeah, we could take that out, or have the contractor take it out. But the plan is not to just blow through there and take out trees. It's only, if we're in those areas and we take out turf, we take out those trees that may be dying. Otherwise, we will try to mitigate that by preemptively planting more trees, like you said.
Okay, and when we look at this as a whole, it's great to remove the turf, but then we have to replace it with something else, and that can create its own problems for us maintaining it, making sure that it's useful, you know, and golfing is still playable, and visually not just plain ugly outside your back door, right? Because a lot of times chatter, different things, collect junk, and the wind blows a lot here, so a lot of stuff lies around, and there's a lot of things with those old trees, with the pine needles, the different things that happen in that. So, do you have a specific plan for when we remove, what we replace with?
Well, our plan would be in all the areas of removal, where we would come back and take out turf, we would replace that with zero scape. So, we have, at one of our, at the last public meeting, we had a plant pallet that we're going to replace it with, which not only would make it look good, but also, to Councilman Walton's point, would get us the coverage that we need to be able to take advantage of the rebate.
Okay.
So, that was there. When we move on and we do final design, then we'll have a specific planting plan that will go along with that.
Okay, not with what has been done in the past, which seems to be slightly problematic?
True. I can say, I know exactly what you're talking about. Yes, correct. So, the area that's behind and to the right of 15 green, correct, that is not our goal. And in fact, we discussed cleaning that up as part of this project.
Yeah, we would clean that up as part of this project. And that's a three-quarter inch decorative rock. We're looking at decomposed granite, a Sierra Gold. That compacted down, it's a, acts as a good weed barrier, not 100%. It is low maintenance, you're not getting the dust off the top. So, we would be looking at that to do the border, the 10-foot border, so.
And for, one specific to that area, one of the issues is that there's drainage that goes through there, so it just feeds the issue with weeds and promotes that. So, the drainage wasn't taken care of properly initially, so that contributes to that condition as well.
Great, thank you.
I have a couple more.
I'm just curious, I, for instance, I get a call that says, you know, I get pine needles in my backyard, you know, and what's your responsibility as the city? And I don't know that we can solve out everybody's backyard, but as I look at the 10-foot or the 5 to 15 feet, depending on where it is, or the corner that is somewhat secluded, the chat or whatever we put down, is that cleanable by the golf course maintenance crew to be able to not have as many pine needles go over into somebody's backyard?
Do I answer that?
You can. Yeah, you can. I can answer that.
Reason I ask is I've got a junior high grandson, and we took a tour.
Yeah.
And counted pine needles, as it were, in backyards.
Oh, boy. I'm surprised you made it out.
Not every backyard.
So, part of that, on the decomposed granite, it is, it's not a trash collector, like I would call three-quarter inch rock, it does not stick, so it is easier to clean, however, you will get it piled up in one area or the other. But as for maintenance, it would be easier to clean it all in one spot and not throughout the entire area. Of course, when you go zero scape from mowing, everything's a little bit more maintenance, maybe not at first, but down the road, it will be, so.
I think some pine needles and trade for those trees blocking the golf balls hitting your house is a fair trade.
So, obviously, we're interested in shade and the cooling of the trees, and we appreciate the difference that it makes in the neighbors, as well as in the city in general. You had something else, Councilman Fox?
Kind of extend on that last question also. That's Memorial Park, when it was originally installed, excuse me, I'm going to get my water here in a minute, about 23 years ago, and it's decomposed granite, and there's over 1,500 pine trees were installed in that park. If you drive through there, it's not a problem in the one area, but it does accumulate in others when we do clean it up. And it is, we don't have much of a weed issue down there, so it is something to kind of compare with that 10-foot border would look like.
Okay, thank you.
Committee of comment, questions? So, I know one of the concerns that have been mentioned up to this point from the residents themselves is the overspray that we talked about that ends up on their walls. They decay or they decline in some way that they're responsible for, and according to, you know, they're taking care of it. So, this will relieve that, which I think is great, and I'm glad to hear that you guys are being very, very mindful of what's going to be put in there, because then... put in there, because then that'll be something that they get to look out over that. I just want to make sure that when we put something in, that we maintain it.
Yeah.
I can't emphasize that enough, because there's so many times that we take things out and we replace them, but we don't maintain them. And grass has a tendency to self-maintain almost, if you just mow it. But other areas do not. And to that, there's weeds, there's trash, there's, there is a level of maintenance, and I appreciate your honesty that over time, this will require more maintenance if we are to continue to maintain it in a way that would be, I think, good for the golf course and for the residents. So thank you, and this isn't a question, it's a comment. Thank you for the work that's been done on this. Thank you for listening to the residents who live here. I believe we do need to be responsible for the resources that we do have. That is clear. And one of those is waters, water in the desert. There's many different ways to be responsible, and I'll probably speak to that more later. But, and I do think Boulder City is taking measures to do that, and this is one of those measures. I really look forward to the end result and seeing exactly what new irrigation actually does, I mean, these are estimates, and I appreciate the estimate, but to see what the reality is afterwards. So on my behalf, thank you to the staff and to you guys for coming back to the table, listening to the residents who have lived here for a very long time, with keeping in mind the fact that some of our reality for our resources has changed. So that almost win-win, which sometimes people look at it lose-lose, but you need to have a half glass, half-full look, and this is a win-win, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
I have a couple more, please. So we're, the timing, were you going to go into that a little bit more, Gary, or, because if you don't mind, if now's an okay time, you know, to do it, let's go through that.
So where we're at right now is seeking approval direction tonight, so we could, Jeffrey can get, and his staff can get started on design. We'd be looking at design completion February, March going out to bid, which would include site visits. We're looking four to six weeks. So into April, we'd be looking at April, sometime in April, coming back with the, award the bid, council approval, excuse me, probably May, early May. And then into May, June, starting construction. And that, we're looking with, working with the Carl down at the golf course superintendent down there. If we don't hit that deadline, we would be looking at January of 2026 would be our next start date, to not interfere with events. So, yeah, so it's either, am I saying that?
Yeah, no, thanks. So if we're able to get our thoughts together and give direction to proceed this evening, if that occurs, then we're looking at early summer 2025 of project starting.
Yes, yeah.
And so we're talking about having sections being done, right?
You can still keep nine holes open.
Okay. So nine holes will be open at all times during the construction, we'll call it, right? Okay. So that's good to know, I think, for everybody listening who is going to continue to golf through all this. And then we're looking at maybe roughly, right, 110 acre feet overage from the four acre feet water budget. In the ordinance, there's a fine structure, and I don't remember the numbers right now, that, you know, if you're over by between 100 and 120%, then you pay X fine, whatever. Let's talk about how we're envisioning that we're going to look at the overage, and if we receive, if we are fining ourselves, right, because that's how it would be, the city is the, is the purveyor entity of our water utility. And so on the other side of that, the city manager, the city-owned golf course is the customer in this case, right? So we would be paying a fine from one way to the other. So let's talk about if there is an overage over the four acre feet water budget, how we anticipate covering the fine and what those monies would be used for.
Okay. Okay. Part of the, in the matrix, we included, so it wouldn't go back to our residents, it would be included in rounds of golf. However, any fines would need to be approved through council first. And we would be, we put together for each plan what it would cost and how that would affect the golfer. And if that was approved, and we did have to increase, increase rounds, I think it was $1.32 per round, oh, thank you, $1.53 per round on the 10-foot with the driving range, if we did have to, that money could, in turn, would be utilized for other water conservation incentive programs.
Okay. So let me restate it, see if I got it right.
Okay.
So the 110 acre feet overage anticipated, right? We're going to run it for a period of time and see what the actual use is. It may be a year till we know exactly. And we anticipate the potential increase per round of about $1.53.
Correct.
Per round, right? So the golfers will absorb the fine cost. Now, that's already written into the ordinance, so that doesn't have to come back to us.
Oh, gotcha.
Right, yeah.
The fine is written into the ordinance. What the, the price per round? I'm not sure how the green fees are set right now, if those go to council, or if there's, those are set a different way.
Okay. Either way, we'll have to figure that out.
Right.
But the fine structure is already in ordinance.
Correct.
Okay.
And any fines would be paid by the city, just like we already pay for the water at the wholesale rate. The city would be responsible for any fines.
So the money that comes from the golf course revenue to the general fund, when we're talking about the fine portion of that would go to the utility department, is that correct?
The fines have to be used for water conservation. Any fines we collect for water waste funds.
They go to, which budget are they going to?
Just general fund.
To the general fund.
And then we have to use them for water conservation efforts.
Thank you. So those fines will go to the general fund earmarked for water conservation projects, capital improvement projects, or other types of projects for water conservation. Okay, so that's.
And there might be more to that, more of incentive programs, whether it was Water Smart clocks, irrigation clocks.
Okay. So we can be creative with our water conservation programs, putting it back into incentives for the community, if we choose to.
Correct. Yeah.
Love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just have an observation and maybe a question at the same time. I recognize that two of our golf courses will be having construction on them with the timeline that you just outlined, if this is what we follow, closer near to the same How do we look at this as far as sustainability for both of them? Because we have houses being built on Creek, and then we have this being redone a little bit. You said you keep nine open here. Are there any considerations for what's going to happen to Creek when they go in and start leveling or doing those kind of things?
Julie's here. Michael, do you have any?
As it relates to Boulder Creek, we're still working with Toll Brothers to look at exactly what type of easement access they would need onto the golf course. They're still evaluating different options. So definitely the muni improvements with the turf reduction, this is the certainty with the timeline, and certainly will work with the golf course manager to minimize the impacts on golf course operations for both courses.
Yeah, good. I just think that we should be mindful of that when we go into this, to be able to make sure that the long-term consequences for, not just the golfer, but for us as we, as we utilize the monies that we get from the golf course. So, thank you.
As a recovered golfer, the nine holes that we will keep open, are we going to be able to have someone do 18 holes by going across the street at Veterans in order to give them an 18-hole experience?
That has been discussed internally, but we would need to work with, I was looking back a minute ago, looking to see if Julie was here, sorry. It was discussed with Julie, and it was something we would have to talk with the golf course superintendent, whether it was that nine, using nine at muni, and nine over at Boulder Creek. However, it would also depend on their events, and/or play two nines. I play 11, so, by that time, so, yeah, it's something we did have internal discussion.
All right. Any other questions? We're faced now with what we want to do as the council direction for the option to proceed to the final design. As we look at it, we have two proposals, one that we said was this, and then we went back to the people and got the second. And so my question is, what does council want to do, the original plan or the new improved plan? I'll call it.
I'm happy to start out. I feel most comfortable at this time with the second plan that's been presented, and then, as has been mentioned, as we go throughout, monitoring what that means as far as our irrigation changing and that turf being removed, to see what that is. So I think we'll come closer to the numbers than we think we will, and so that's the one that I, at this time, feel most comfortable with.
Set a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt the 10 perimeter and driving range only turf removal.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second movement, seconded discussion.
I'm not sure what you, I couldn't hear what you said, which one?
I'm sorry. It's the 10-foot perimeter and driving range removal.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Any questions?
I'll just throw in, to keep as much turf, you know, grass as we can at the 10-foot perimeter for a buck 30 to additionally to play a round of golf. Myself, and I'm sure many others, would gladly pay that to cover the fine, if that's what it takes.
So the motion that council is looking at is which one to do, and the motion is 10-foot perimeter and the driving range only, quote unquote. And any other discussion on that? If not, I will call for vote. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
No, it's been unanimous. Thank you very much. And we will now move to the second part of our presentation number five. Mr. Stupitz.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. To further the conversation on water conservation, Joe Stupitz, your utilities director, want to talk through a presentation on the city's efforts to comply with Assembly Bill 356. This is addressing the non-functional turf. Oh, yeah, sorry. No worries. So give you a little background. In 2021, the Nevada Legislature enacted a law that will prohibit the use of Colorado River water to irrigate non-functional grass, beginning in 2027. There's, there was a Non-Functional Turf Removal Advisory Committee, or NTRAC is the acronym for that. They came up with the guidelines that defined what non-functional turf is. There we go. I want to do this. Okay. So just to give you a little bit more background, the Colorado River Basin spans over 246,000 square miles across seven U.S. states and Mexico. This is managed by the Bureau of Reclamation. That's an agency within the Department of Interior. The water is used for many different purposes. For us, it's used for municipal purposes. I can't get this to work, so. Next slide.
Is that not working?
Um. Is it? Say this one. Okay, very good. Okay, so prolonged drought or aridification since 2000 is kind of where we are, where we are. Drought contingency plans were implemented in 2019. Both Lake Mead and Lake Powell have been significantly below average, and they pose a risk not only to water supplies, but to hydropower, which we also are a recipient of. And in the next calendar year, it's forecasted to be a tier-one shortage, and sustainable water management is needed to address the deficits. So this gives you a little visual in 40 years of what really has happened. This is right in our backyard at Lake Mead. In 40 years, you could see the, the capacity of Lake Mead has gone down significantly. To the right of this slide is a water drop, where the water goes, and that's in the lower Colorado Basin. We're just a very small, tiny bit, the top, 300,000 acre feet in Nevada. And so AB 356, this was the law that was passed in 2021. Boulder City is preparing to comply with the requirements by removing non-functional turf in various areas throughout the city. So I'll go into a little bit of the progress thus far. This is a plan for Oasis Park, not only to address non-functional turf, but to also increase ADA accessibility. It involves a new sidewalk along Sandra, and then, you know, meandering path, keeping the existing trees, and then some zero-scape landscaping to the perimeter of the street. This map, and several others that we'll go through, are maps from the Southern Nevada Water Authority, where they've denoted what turf is functional and what turf is non-functional. So the plan that we kind of had would address the non-functional turf areas in the southeast portion of the park. There'd just be a few small areas to remove in both the intersections of Diane and El Camino Way, and then this park would be compliant. So now we'll get into North and South Escalante. So both of these parks have perimeter around the park that's been identified as non-functional, as well as the parkway that's adjacent to the Arizona Street. We did apply for a waiver to get the setback requirements of 10 feet relaxed to 7 feet, and that includes a two-foot perimeter of decomposed granite and a paver walkway. So that design is shown here. We also have the same design anticipated for North Escalante, and we submitted a waiver request for North Escalante as well. That request has been submitted. We don't anticipate it will be denied, since it was the same request that was approved for South Escalante. So then we get into Frank Crowe Park. Here's some pictures of some of the progress there. You know, we are looking at kind of beautifying this, instead of just kind of leaving it as decomposed granite, but that's where we are today. Okay, now we get into ABC Park. Here's some of the progress at ABC Park turf removal. And then we're going to get into Bicentennial Park, City Hall, and the Rec Center. Again, the areas on the map that you see in red, those are the areas that are identified as non-functional turf. So here's some of the progress for the Rec Center, and here we have a nice paver arrangement. And then here's some progress at Boulder Creek. So the area just kind of next to the pavilion area, that's been cleared out and replaced with decomposed granite. So that's the progress that we've made so far. Now we're going to get into the public parks and plans that, you know, we don't necessarily have in the works yet. So for Wilbur Square, we did submit a waiver request, and, you know, we are seeking direction. The waiver request was for five-foot setback on Park Street. So the idea would be to extend the sidewalk that ends into the street, along Park Street, and then bring the sidewalk on Colorado Street out to provide that 10-foot perimeter, since the width of Colorado Street is sufficient. Hemming Way Park, there's a small amount of non-functional turf around the parking lot that needs to be taken care of. Some ideas- Some ideas we have, decomposed granite and shrubs, ground cover. And then Del Prado Park, you know, pavers would be a great option here. It's only 900 square feet. Then we get into city and other government facilities. The police station, all the areas surrounding the police station have been identified as non-functional turf. There is a stipulation that allows for a pet relief area in front of veterinarian buildings of 250 square feet. So that could be utilized for the canine units, for a pet relief area. We could, we could look to apply a waiver for that, that section of turf. And then finally, the city cemetery. We did talk with SNWA about the area that's outside of the cemetery, that's not used for any of the function of the cemetery. There's no burial plots there. There's a bench. We are planning on doing a paver path there. It's over 20,000 square feet, but SNWA has identified it as non-functional turf. We could certainly designate this as a park, people use that area, and then apply for a And then on the Boulder City Public Pool, the area in yellow is identified as non-functional without modification. So the reason why it's non-functional without modification is because of the setback requirements. We submitted a waiver for no turf removal in this area, and it's due to the special events that we have, the two parades twice a year, folks getting kind of right up to the edge of the street in the grass, and then we've talked about a paver walkway around the park. The libraries included believe that they've complied with all the requirements on their own. And now we're looking for, for feedback and discussion. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions?
For Wilbur Square, you know, with all the events we have there, you know, especially the car shows where they park on the grass and everything, could we get a waiver for that not to remove anything and put, not put pavers? Because they have cars, you know, on the grass all the way lined up to the edge of the sidewalk.
So we did submit a waiver request not to remove any turf, but just to take the sidewalk and extend it up Park Street. So I guess depending on the configuration of the street, that would be the only area of turf that would be removed. And then adjacent to the turbine structure, because it's not 30 feet in all directions, we would look to, to take that grass out.
And there's no waiver, no waiver available to not do any of those?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so we keep all grass there?
So part of the Wilbur we were looking at is one of the, where you have the two ramps, part of the lower part of the pork chop area, is fixing those ramps so they actually meet ADA, but also that would improve getting a lot of these cars for the car shows into that area a lot easier. With extending that ten feet out, we were, we haven't proposed the plan yet, but we are looking at adding knuckles on both ends. And where we could close Colorado Street, instead of putting in type-two, type-three barricades out, actually do where we have gates that come down and protect our pedestrians. So part of that ten-foot extension down on Colorado could be really a multipurpose project is what we were looking at, so.
Cool. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilman Booth?
And I just wanted to confirm, we're not going to take any of the grass away from the bighorns?
That's correct. Yeah, at the Hemingway Park.
We have some grass to eat, we can still watch them.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, they were out today.
Oh.
I have pictures to prove it.
Nice.
It's quite a pole for people to enjoy that.
Yeah.
It's functional, is what I'm saying.
Absolutely.
Right. Definition of functional versus non-functional, if you would, please.
So there's been some frequently asked questions that have been kind of released by SNWA. The, the Non-Functional Turf Removal Advisory Committee came up with these guidelines, so I'll kind of go through them. For an athletic field, it's got to be at least 1,500 square feet and 30 feet in all directions. For a pet relief area, it's a maximum of 250 square feet. For multi-purpose or for multifamily living, and if there's a common area, it's 100 square feet per unit. The setback requirements are 10 feet from curb or street. Single-family residents are not included. I think that, that's everything.
So parks are no longer exempt as functional?
The parks are exempt, it's just portions of the parks, you know, are deemed non-functional if they don't meet the setback requirements.
Okay, and functional doesn't include people utilizing them, if you see people there daily utilizing them?
If it doesn't meet the definition that they, that this advisory committee has laid out, that's what the waiver process is intended to accomplish. It's, it's a way to, to gather that, those areas that are considered non-functional that actually are functional, and then, you know, go through that process.
Because I do have some concerns with the area out front of City Hall. I do feel like people utilize that frequently. I see it during events, I see it when I come up here. I just see that that is a functional portion of what is being used by individuals even in the area who live and may not have the grass that they need in their own areas. I mean, they're walking their dogs, they're, they're out there enjoying it. So I do see a concern with that. Just kind of also want to say, because I hear this a lot, well, we're not doing anything. And then that's not true. We are, as a city, as you can see, addressing water shortage, and we are doing something about it. I believe as a municipality, we actually reduced our water at the highest percentage this, this last year, right? Our water use?
Yes.
Yes. So out of all the municipalities in this county, we reduced our water use.
Our total use.
Our total usage.
Yep.
By the highest percentage. So we are out working hard at doing our part to conserve this resource that we have. We are known as clean, green Boulder City. So we'll be hopefully still clean when we remove this by putting in beautiful pavers that you just talked about, so that it's not just a place. I mean, you don't have to go far into town to see what happens when you just remove turf, put in chat, and then plant randomly something. It, it does change the, the way that the community feels at that time. So I like the idea, pavers are clean, they're, I think it'll enhance Boulder City. So I like that, and with green in sections of those pavers, so that we do have some coverage that Southern Nevada Water Authority even talks about, some of that foliage on the side. I also would like to point out, and for those of you who have heard it before, I'm sorry to reiterate this, but here we go. When we get in the sandbox with the other municipalities, is what I like to call it, and we're playing in the sandbox for water conservation, we in Boulder City choose to just do it different. That's the way it is. We choose to dig holes, I like to say. So how do we dig a hole, you ask? Well, there's a couple things. We have a tortoise area, right? Michael, how big is that? How many square miles is it that we have of tortoise refuge area?
Over 100 square miles.
Over 100 square miles of our city limits are for tortoise refuge. Well, how does that help the communities other than Boulder City? It allows everywhere else in Clark County to be able to grow, because we have that. We also choose to have a growth restriction, which means, how many did we grow with the last census?
We actually lost population?
Yeah, by a thousand, right? So hence, when we're in and we're digging a hole, what I'm talking about is, we care about the size of our community. We want quality, not quantity. So we're playing nice in the sandbox by doing our part, and we might do it differently. They might want to build sandcastles, and they are. All you have to do is go through that mountain pass to see how many they're building. I love the idea that they say, every ounce that goes down the drain, that's fantastic, but every person that you add, there are ounces that don't go down that drain. The other part is, is that we do have allotments, and one of our allotments is 18 acre feet, isn't it?
18,000, yes.
18,000. Yeah, thank goodness. And how much do we use a year?
I mean, the, the most recent, we were in the 40% range.
40% of that allotment.
Yes.
Right? So in essence, saving 60% of that allotment. That allotment stays there, being utilized by the communities, Henderson, Las Vegas, and allows them to grow. So we are good people in conservation efforts. We just play differently in the sandbox. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Along that same line, Mr. Stubbets, the, do you have figures that say this is how much water we've used 10 years ago, or five years ago, or 20 years ago versus what we did last year?
Yes, yes, we have those, and, you know, I don't have those readily available, but we've been exponentially decreasing our usage over the past three years.
Yeah. I mean, our people in the community have put in turf.
Yep.
I mean, so we've made a huge, I say huge, and I just wait for you to make sure that I'm not misspeaking, but we've made a huge difference in our residential areas in conserving water.
Absolutely.
And obviously, we can figure out how to, when we get to helping us, if we save water, what we can do with those water conservation areas that we are going to use. So thank you for what you're doing. Any other questions, or go ahead?
I think Ms. Jorgensen brought up a good question. Why, instead of taking grass out around City Hall, why couldn't we use more artificial turf? So that we keep some of that look like what they've done down Birch Street. They've done some really nice design work, and it still looks green and cool. So is that something we can look into, or?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, there's a number of options that we have for the front of City Hall. We can apply for a waiver to maintain or keep some of the grass. We can install artificial turf. We can, there's other options that have been floated, like coropia, which is sort of a succulent, but maintains a, a grass-like look, and it only needs to be watered twice a year.
Can you play in that?
Uh, I, you know, I believe so.
Because I think it's, this grass out here is utilized a lot every time there's a parade or a car show, or, I mean, spring jamboree, art in the park.
I agree.
It's always packed. So if we couldn't get a waiver, I would definitely think we would want to put in, instead of the crushed granite, the artificial grass, like they've done, I mean, they've done some beautiful jobs over there on Birch Street, and I hope anybody that hasn't driven down Birch Street will take the time to see what you can do with artificial. And that's all that I have to say.
Thank you.
And along that same lines, I think we've made the decision, we don't cut trees down in front of City Hall.
Right.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I've got a handful, if you don't mind. I was going to save this for later, but since everybody's coming off the top ropes, I'd love to see that so many people in our community are now becoming so well-educated on the Colorado River water. So I'll just throw some things out there to not say that it's good or bad, just some facts. Nevada's allocation of the Colorado River system is 3%, 3%, right? Of the overall, Nevada's allocation is 3%. Boulder City's allocation is 6%. We're using 40% of our 6% of the 3%. Let's not get lost on the fact that the problem in the Colorado River system isn't Boulder City. Again, we are using 40% of our 3% of the 6%, okay? So our 60%, as has been noted, of, of the allocation that we have per the 1991 Cooperative Agreement, 60% of our water is going over the hill to be used for those communities. And our, the, the per capita comparison absolutely fails to take into account the consistency of our population, and the fact that Boulder City is not prone to build high-density housing throughout the entire community or expand. If we wanted to bring our per capita use down, we could certainly go build a multitude of multifamily dwellings in areas that are undeveloped and divide our allocation by a higher number. And that's all we would be doing. And I think that's important to note. We divide our number by a smaller number of people, but still, our usage is absolutely infinitesimally small in the big picture. And so we are doing good. And we're even, as had been noted, we were down about 23% of our overall use, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Stubbets, right?
Yep.
From the prior couple of years, which was the highest percentage reduction of all communities.
Correct.
For their consumptive use. So let's be educated and not just scratch the surface here in, in what we're talking about, in water conservation and, and functional turf. So on to the important part of this, and I appreciate the comments that have been brought up. Escalante Park, 100% of that turf, as well as Wilbur Square, in my opinion, is functional. The fact that we need to come back with those setbacks per the turf reduction groups' standards, I think the, the, the fact that we have requested a variance from that is, is great. And that we bring it seven, seven feet instead of the 10 feet allows us to give us the walkway for ADA accessibility around the parks, awesome. That's part of our goal as well. But those parks are heavily used, Wilbur Square and Escalante Park, and the minimal reduction in turf there, right on the money. I'm in favor, well, let me say this first. Whenever I go by the intersection of Adams and Utah, there's almost always somebody in that area using that grassy area for a variety of activities. So the, the suggestion, or at least the statement, hey, we could designate that as a park, that's one way. We could either ask for a variance or designate it as a park, right? I'm in favor of one or the other, whatever is the most prudent method for that corner. You mentioned that we would put a, a paver walkway through there for access to the bench area and just to get through it. I think that's great, while still maintaining as much turf as possible, Mr. Mayor. So that's a suggestion that I would make. I agree 100%. If we look at the, at the slide that has City Hall with the Rec Center, so there are square footage numbers in those images, and so I, I identified the square footage numbers as those that I don't agree with as non-functional. As a matter of fact, maybe we should designate the area between Parks and Rec in front of City Hall as a park, I don't know, or at least ask for a variance. But the 2671 that's in front of City Hall on the north side of the main entrance, so kind of right outside these windows here, I think that's functional, and I don't agree with the designation by the turf removal folks. So I'd like to talk about that as counsel. The 6154, that L-shaped that's on the south side of the main entrance, I think, is also utilized a lot. Most of the 4558, that little section that goes back northbound, that little narrow strip, I think, is not really very functional, but certainly everything out front of Parks and Rec on the south side, the 4558, the bulk of that, and the 2096, the square footage, right? Joe, that's what the? Joe, that's what those are. Are both functional. Um, even the eighty-six, eighty-seven, eight-seventy-six, sorry. Now, I don't know if that qualifies because of the narrowness of it, um, since it doesn't meet the, the dimensions as required, maybe we can't even call that functional, but, um, you know, the kids are all over all that area, all the time. You know, the people, the, the kiddos that are, um, in the small preschool activities to the sports activities, and of all ages coming out and playing everywhere around that. So anyway, I, I, you know, would like us to talk about that. Mayor, please. Um, and let me see if I have any other areas that I wanted to talk about. Oh, the areas in front of, in front of the police station? Uh, I think we need some further clarification on the functionality of those. I, I would, I would favor putting the police station grass on hold for another conversation. Um, in the briefing yesterday with the police chief, he mentioned that there might be a plaque even on the, um, east side of the main entrance to the police station that designates that area as some type of a garden. I didn't go by there and look at it, but that was his recollection offhand. So maybe there's something there that has more meaning and reference to us as a community than, than we might recognize in this meeting right now. And then certainly the dog, uh, relief area, I'm in favor of maintaining for the police station. So I think that covers my comments, Mayor.
Thank you. So I think what you're hearing is, we like parks, we like grass, uh, we know we use it, uh, and everywhere that we can see, if we got on the top of this roof, is being used-
That's right.
-that we have now. So we are, I think we can make a good case for the three percent of the forty percent of the six percent, or whichever one you used on that, uh, um, I mean, that's what we do, as well as the decreasing use by our city in general. Um, I think that's the message that we want to give. So my question then, having, uh, I, we don't have any opposition that I can see or hear of wavering parking with, uh, park, uh, and with everything that we can do, especially with the numbers that we have and the division that's explained so eloquently by the Councilman Walton. That's kind of where we have, so we're looking for, we've discussed it, I think you've heard direction, uh, from us. I don't know that we need a motion to say, uh, get whatever you can get and be as conforming as you can be, uh, in spirit of what we're doing. We don't need them.
No, Mayor, I think we have, uh, clear direction in how we should proceed with, uh, turf reduction.
Right. Pretty commonalities here. Thank you. So we will, uh, appreciate your presentation, Mr. Stubitz.
Absolutely.
And that, uh, brings us to a recess of, uh, ten and a half minutes before we take We'll bring City Council back to order out of recess. Uh, Mr. City Manager, item number six on our agenda.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Hardy and members of City Council. The Desert Research Institute owns, uh, three acres at fifteen hundred Buchanan Boulevard. They are requesting an amendment to the master plan and amendment to the zoning. Um, the amendment to the master plan, as you can see with the, the map on the screen, would propose the land use designation from low-density residential to what we refer to as PUB, public quasi-public uses. They are also considering, um, proposed change in the zoning of their property from R-three multifamily to GM government municipal. Uh, this would be the zoning designation that is reflective of what the Desert Research Institute does as a government entity, doing research on the property. This went before the, uh, Planning Commission on, uh, June twelfth, and the Planning Commission recommended seven-zero to amend the master plan and the zoning for the property. And so you have a for you, uh, Resolution Seventy-eight forty-three to amend the master plan for the three acres, and Bill Number Twenty-sixty-one to amend the zoning. And, uh, this requires a public hearing, and, uh, Mr. Ross with DRI is here to answer any questions, and then I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, we'll open the public hearing on the proposed master plan amendment, and maybe, uh, Mr. Ross would like to come up as part of that public hearing and say something, and try to be positive.
Good evening, Mayor Hardy, members of City Council, city staff. Thank you. My name's Peter Ross. I'm here representing the Desert Research Institute tonight, and, uh, the request before you really is quite simple. Uh, DRI has a long historical use of that property, using it, uh, for our research purposes, and, uh, we discovered, uh, that the zoning and the, uh, master plan designation didn't align with the current use, and it just is common sense for us to correct that once it was discovered, and that's what's before you this evening. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
I, I got to tour your, uh, facility. It was very interesting. Can you just briefly tell everybody what you do there?
Uh, thank you. Uh, DRI is in the business of conducting basic research, both with our campus here in Boulder City, our facility in Las Vegas, and also in Reno and at the Reno State Airport. DRI, uh, i- i- in summary, does environmental research, and, uh, that's both working with, uh, water resources, air quality, and, uh, basic plant science. At the Boulder City facility, we've been working on desert plants, and we have a, um, special experimental system there that looks at how fast water moves down through a water col- through a column of soil, for example, and those might be what you toured when you were on site there. And, uh, we also do water, uh, other water resource work there currently, and some plant science.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, anyone else like to come forward in, uh, this public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. And if you would like to call in for the public hearing, seven oh-two-five-eight-nine-ninety-six-twenty-nine, welcome to do that. If anybody else wants to come forward and participate in the public hearing here in the room, that'd be great. And if there's nobody on seven oh-two-five-eight-nine, et cetera, then we will, ninety-six-twenty-nine, um, we will close the public hearing. And, uh, Resolution Number Seventy-eight forty-three, um, do I have a suggestion?
I have a question. Can we take both at the same time? No, one's a bill and one's a resolution. Okay. Sir, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Since I have the floor, I'll say let's, uh, approve, uh, Resolution Seven-eight-four-three, and that one's with findings, right?
Is there a?
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number Seventy-eight forty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, no. Uh, uh, it is unanimous, therefore, we'll consider number C. Um, I think you probably want to say something about that, Councilman Walton?
Yeah, I say that we approve Bill Two-zero-six-one. And do findings include with that one as well? With the findings. Second?
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, it's unanimous, thank you. Which brings us to, thank you, Mr. Ross, for being here. Uh, which brings us to number seven on our agenda, consideration of Bill Number Twenty-sixty-two. Go ahead.
Uh, good afternoon, City Council members and Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for having me. I'm Josh Brown, the acting, or sorry, Assistant Fire Chief, uh, for the Boulder City Fire Department, and I'm bringing item seven to you today for your consideration for Bill Two-zero-six-two. This is to repeal some language in the Boulder City Title II Departments, Chapter Eight, Offensive Emergent, uh, Emergency Management, and replace it with a new Title One Administration, Chapter Ten Emergency Management, to update the Boulder City's emergency management ordinance. This is to update the process to establish an emergency operation, uh, during a disaster that is more in line with the current practices and definitions in NRS. It also defines how the emergency council members are to be appointed and their roles during a disaster. Um, I want to make a note, uh, there, you've been handed a handout to, to the exhibit to correct some numbering. Um, other than that, uh, no other changes, and I'm here to answer some questions, if you have any.
All right. The numbering was put in yellow on our handout. Okay. Any questions?
Chief Brown, just to clarify, when we talk about the emergency, uh, council, we mean the emergency management council, and not to confuse that with any other council we have in the city.
That is correct. I apologize.
Okay. No, no, just making sure we, we all have that clarification. Thank you. That was it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, approve Bill Twenty-sixty-two.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of consideration of Bill Twenty-sixty-two, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, it is unanimous. Thank you, Chief. And that brings us to number eight on our agenda.
So before the City Council this evening are matters pertaining to airport ground leases that will expire on November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight. You have for your consideration two bills. Bill Twenty-sixty-three, approving a lease agreement for number ninety-eight forty-eight-two-G between the city and Viking Sky LLC, that would restate the agreement, the existing agreement, extend the terms for a period of ten years with an additional ten-year option. You also have before you Bill Twenty-sixty-four, um, approving lease agreement number ninety-eight dash four-seven-eight-F, and this is with the city and Sharon Peterson Trust, amending and restating their agreement to extend the terms by ten years with a ten-year extension. I can answer any questions.
Any questions?
Are we able to do both in one motion? All right.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Bill Number Twenty-sixty-three and Bill Number Twenty-sixty-four.
Sir, second?
Seconded.
Seconded and thirded, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye for consideration of both bills, Twenty-sixty-three and Twenty-sixty-four. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, it's passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and that brings us to consideration of number nine on our agenda.
So this is a similar amendment to a lease. This is, uh, Bill Twenty-sixty-five, approving a lease agreement number ninety-four dash thirty-six-E between the city and Scott Russell and Charles Pendleton. Again, restating the airport lease, extending it by ten years with an additional ten-year option, same terms as the prior consideration.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
I'll move to adopt Bill Number Twenty-sixty-five.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt, uh, Bill Two-zero-six-five, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In case you wanted a discussion, that's too late. Uh, thank you, Mr. City Manager. That brings us to number ten.
So, item ten is related to item six. Uh, this is point-six-five acres, uh, directly west of the DRI property that I mentioned earlier. Um, DRI is interested in the city, which owns this land, this vacant land, having it conveyed to DRI for the purpose of additional research, as noted before with Mr. Ross. Um, as the first step in the process, uh, we are looking to propose amendment to the master plan and the zoning for this property. And so as you can see on the screen, the first map shows, um, the existing master plan designation for this point-six-five acres, which is low-density residential, proposing to change it to PUB, which is public quasi-public use, and then, um, amending the zoning from R-one-ten low-density residential to GM government municipal. This would put it consistent with the action the council just took with the DR property, so that they would both have the same master plan land use designations and the same zoning. This also does require a, uh, public hearing, and, uh, just like the prior action, it was before the, uh, Planning Commission in June, and the Planning Commission recommended seven-zero to support the amendment to the master plan and to the zoning. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions? We will open the public hearing on the master plan amendment and the zoning map. Has anyone here like to come up, or anyone on the phone line, seven oh-two-five-eight-nine-ninety-six-twenty-nine? Anybody here more than welcome to come up while we're waiting for someone to call in at seven oh-two-five-eight-nine-ninety-six-twenty-nine for the public hearing on both Resolution Seventy-eight forty-four and Bill Number Two-zero-six-six, which we will hear separately as motions once we get through with the public hearing, and seeing nobody on the public hearing phone number, nor, there is somebody. No, there's not somebody. Um, nobody on the phone. I would just close the public hearing and hear a motion on Resolution Seventy-eight forty-four.
I'd just like to make a comment before that res-
Okay.
... that motion. Um, that is, um, parcel of land that was zoned residential. It does abut to quite a few homes in the back of it, uh, quite a few residential areas, in fact, all residential areas. And in speaking to Peter Ross before he left, and also with our attorney, I just want people to rest assured that there will be nothing over a single story ever built back there, and that that will, um, uh, that's not something that they have to worry about as we proceed forward with this, that it won't be something that will be unsightly for them.
Thank you. Any other comments? I would accept a motion for Resolution Seventy-eight forty-four.
Move to approve Resolution Seventy-eight forty-four.
Second.
Moved and seconded for Resolution Seventy-eight forty-four. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it is unanimous. Thank you, and that brings us to consideration of Bill Twenty-sixty-six.
I move to adopt Bill Twenty-sixty-six, um, based on the findings, as noted within the resolution and bill.
Second.
Moved and seconded, there was somebody who had some question? No. And any other discussion on that? All those in favor then of Bill Number Twenty-sixty-six, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, it is unanimous. Thank you very much. And that brings us to regular business number eleven. And I think you're going to say something now.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members and residents of Boulder City, I am Julie Callaway, your Parks and Recreation Director. Item number eleven on tonight's agenda is the annual inter-local agreements pertaining to shared funding for homeless services. Local jurisdictions, Boulder City, Las Vegas, Henderson, Clark County, and North Las Vegas, have formed a regional partnership sharing funding to address homelessness in Clark County, and the resolutions and agreements are before you this evening. The first agreement and resolution focus on the homeless census and evaluation. Clark County conducts a point-in-time count or census annually. Boulder City staff and volunteers participate throughout Boulder City and provide data to Clark County through an app. This year, we were able to pass out, um, bus passes and socks to individuals participating in the general- in the general survey. The funds for the census and evaluation help support the administration costs of the census and data analysis associated with account. The second agreement focuses on Homeless Management Information System, or HMIS. HMIS is a HUD-required software system for tracking homeless services offered to individuals through various service providers. The HMIS funding supports 240 user licenses, administration costs, and technical support. Our local emergency aid of Boulder City utilizes HMIS to manage its clients. The final agreement combines funds to provide emergency shelter services during inclement weather conditions for the welfare and safety of individuals. Participation costs for the three agreements are determined through a formula using overall population and homeless populations. Boulder City's participation level is at .8% of the overall project cost, and the funding amount remains the same from previous years. The total funding with the three agreements is $839,555.75, and Boulder City's share of the cost is $6,716.45. The funds for these agreements were budgeted within the current fiscal year budget, and they have not increased. Clark County Social Services continues to combine these funds and support these activities as a priority to improve homeless services within Clark County. Boulder City benefits from participating in the regional efforts in several ways, including receiving federal funding for local nonprofits like St. Jude's Ranch for Children and Emergency Aid of Boulder City. Staff utilizes organizations like Help of Southern Nevada to assist with providing homeless services to individuals in Boulder City. So while we might not have a lot of homeless or homeless services in our town, our community does have access to the homeless services provided within Clark County. Tonight, staff is recommending approval of the interlocal agreements and resolutions before you this evening pertaining to shared services for homeless services within Clark County. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
What happens if we don't? What are the, just the negatives?
We wouldn't look like very good community partners. And one of the reasons why this is a regional effort, and why things like HMIS are things that we support regionally, is because they are HUD mandated. So to get federal funds for homeless services or nonprofits, similar to Emergency Aid of Boulder City, and the children's home, St. Jude's Children's Home for Children, Ranch for Children, you want to make sure you're in compliance with what HUD has asked you to do to be able to receive those funds.
Perfect, thank you.
So if we don't do this, we'd have to do our own application to HUD.
That is correct.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Now, I probably could take this motion for all three of them, because they're similar resolutions, so I would accept a motion for Resolution 7845, 7846, and 7847.
I move to pass Resolution 7845, 7846, and 7847.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it is unanimous, thank you. We will now move to number 12, thank you.
The property owner at 601 Lido Drive erected a four-foot-high fence within the right-of-way without a building permit. This was in violation of zoning requirements that require fences be on the private property and not public right-of-way. As you can see on the screen here, those portions of the fence that are highlighted in yellow are within our right-of-way. Our right-of-way at this property is approximately nine and a half feet back of curb. So the property for the home begins beyond that, and so that is what is in conflict with our zoning ordinance. As you can see from this image, the fence also blocks city access to the right-of-way and the utilities that are contained within the right-of-way. And that was a concern of our Public Works Department, because they would not have the ability to access the utilities if need be. Property owner submitted a variance request to be able to maintain the fence in its current location. That variance request was considered by the Planning Commission. On July 17th, they held a public hearing. Planning Commission, at that meeting, ruled seven to zero to deny the variance. The property owner has the right to appeal the Planning Commission's decision, and that is why this matter is before you this evening for that appeal. Karen Richardson is here representing the property owner. And so what staff is looking for is the City Council to hold a public hearing on the appeal request, and then deliberate, and either vote to sustain the Planning Commission's denial of the variance request, or a vote to reverse the Planning Commission's decision to allow the fence to remain. And with that, I can answer any questions from a staff standpoint?
What happens if it's denied?
They will be required to remove the fence.
And move a wall back and get plants off of the utility that's underground?
The plants, the plants aren't the concern, it's the fence that's blocking our access to the utilities.
So the utilities are under that fence?
Correct, under and behind the fence, which is why in our zoning ordinance, we don't allow fences to be in the right-of-way, and they have to be at the beginning of the property line.
So if they move the fence line behind the trees to follow the, I guess, the concrete, that would be okay?
If we can have the image back up, I can... There you go, thank you, Holly. So you'll see that there's a line to the left and to the right of the yellow highlight areas. That horizontal line denotes the setback. So the fences that are highlighted yellow, and you'll see one segment actually is not highlighted, that could remain, because that's on their property. But the three other yellow segments would have to be moved back into the driveway to be outside of the right-of-way, and be in compliance with our zoning codes.
So where the fence goes out to the curb in front of the trees, is that the non-highlighted part? It's kind of hard to...
Could we pull up the actual picture? So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, see, all of that would have to be moved back to be in compliance, because it's within the right-of-way.
Including the entrance gates to the entry of the driveway on both sides?
Yes, because they aren't far enough back. So that entire segment there is shown as within the right-of-way.
So, but the trees that are there just behind the fence aren't over the utilities or impending access to the utilities?
Yeah, Public Works is, at this point, doesn't have any concerns with the trees. We obviously have trees within our right-of-way throughout the community. The major concern is not having the ability to access this area if they need to dig down to service the utilities within the right-of-way.
I mean, I was up there today looking at the site, and so the trees, even though they're in the right-of-way, they would not have to be moved?
Correct.
But the gate, the fence, and then a portion of the part to the right, with the exception of a little portion to the right, would all have to be moved?
Yeah, everything you see there would need to be moved back.
Could we make it to where we could allow the variance, but to have it set back to where the driveway gate lines up? That way, the fence in front of the trees gets moved behind it, but that way, they don't have to dig up the, all the concrete where the posts are, where the automatic gates are.
I think part of the concern, and I don't know the exact location of the utilities within the right-of-way, obviously, when you do excavation, you do excavation more than right where the utility line is, and so you need to utilize, in many cases, the entire right-of-way to be able to get down to the utilities to service them. So the concern would be with the fence being still within the right-of-way, and then that may have to be removed for us to access those utilities in the future.
And according to your diagram, the gate, the electronic gate, as it were, on the left, is within the city right-of-way.
Correct.
So you would have to move the gate as well as the fence significantly.
Are those posts cemented in, or are they just bolted into the cement? Do we know?
That I don't know off the top of my head, because we didn't receive the building permit for that. They did submit after the fact, but I don't have that information.
It is a substantial gate.
It's a beautiful gate.
Yeah, it's gorgeous, in the wrong place.
How much further back behind the landscaping that's there does that fence need to go into the driveway?
It would be an approximate based on the image that we have, but you're going to need to move portions of the gate, at least another four feet to get back within the property, and in some cases, more. Obviously, the fence that is adjacent to the back of curb, that's going to have to go back a full nine and a half feet. Because that is at the beginning of the measurement, back of curb, nine and a half feet back from there.
A setback for that.
Right.
So having been there, where that truck is, there will be enough access for a vehicle to be back there, and then there is a substantial driveway on the right that we can't see that is accessed directly to the street that has, you could put something very big back there. So shall we, is that all you have for him? Open the public hearing?
Public hearing, and again, we've got a representative of the homeowner here to answer questions and provide their appeal request.
So we'll open the public hearing on item 12.
Good evening, I'm Karen Richardson, I'm the land use consultant representing the Kent family for 601 Lido. And the family is seeking approval of the variance that was submitted for the existing wrought iron fence. And initially, it wasn't clear to the family that the fence in its current location wouldn't be allowed, because directly across the street from their house is a block wall that is set at the back of curb, is in the, was in the right-of-way when it was constructed, however, that was solved a number of years ago by the family purchasing the right-of-way. But that's the reason that they thought that their wrought iron fence was going to be acceptable, is they didn't know the exact conditions of the block wall and that right-of-way condition. The primary purpose of the wrought iron fence is to secure the front yard and the driveway areas, and they feel it is integral to the safety and privacy of their property. The drawing that we submitted as a compromise position, solution, is a little bit different than the drawing that you saw with the yellow highlighted areas. And I brought one copy of it, but I believe you do have a copy of it in your backup. And it does show that portion of the fence at the landscaped area being moved behind that landscaping. The gates, they would like to remain in the location that they are, because it does affect the efficiency of that sort of half-brow driveway, and they wouldn't be able to park the vehicle, as you saw in a previous picture, in that location if the gates were also moved back. Now, the lot is in odd shape, and the concreted area, or the hardscaped area that's in the back of the lot is not, it does have a separate gate, but it's not accessed for security of their vehicles. They do use this front driveway and the garage for the security of their vehicles. They think, and I think, and you've mentioned as well, that the fence is complementary, definitely, to the architectural style of the home. We believe it contributes to the curb appeal of the home and doesn't negatively impact the neighborhood. The minimal impact on the right-of-way, or there is a minimal impact on the right-of-way, and if that portion of the fence, if you were to approve the variance, being moved back behind the landscaping also addresses a concern about a car being parked on that, on the street in front of the landscaping, and a pedestrian, or I'm sorry, a passenger getting out on that side without a conflict to the fence as it would be a conflict today. So given the critical role that the family believes that the wrought iron fence plays, we are asking for your approval of the variance with a condition that the portion of the fence moves to the back of the landscaping, the existing gates stay where they are, so that they have efficient use of their driveways. And I would offer that there is a document that could be recorded. The county, the Clark County, uses the landscape and maintenance agreement for additional non-standard improvements like this wrought iron fence to occur in a right-of-way, and it provides for the future removal, so a bond would be posted for the future removal of that wrought iron fence should improvements need to take place. So with that, I'd ask for your approval.
Thank you, any questions?
So with your drawing that you submitted, the gate goes behind the landscape, but the entryways of the gates move forward. Is that, do I see that correctly?
I'm sorry, the gates move, oh, our, the drawing that we submitted?
Yeah.
The gates remain exactly where they are, and only that portion, that landscaped portion, would the fence move back behind that line that delineates the landscaping.
Because it looks like, Holly, if you go back a few images before the highlighted one?
May I approach and show you my drawing?
I think we have it in our...
You have it?
Then I'm looking at the wrong one, then. Yeah, what drawing is it?
Was that provided to staff?
Is that page 264 of the packet?
It's not in the packet. So, Mayor and members of the City Council, if, Holly, we can go back to the image? What this is representing is the compromise. So when we go back to the site plan image, the yellow shows the response by moving back the fence that's at the back of the curb. the fence that's at the back of the curb, but keeping the gates in place. However, everything that's noted in yellow is still within the right-of-way. So, gates don't move, they're still within the right-of-way, but the fence that's right on the curb moves back, and a portion of it is still within the right-of-way, but the other portion is not.
And it's still an issue with the utilities?
Yes, they still have concerns that those areas noted in yellow would still be a potential conflict to access the utilities. So, what it does is it solves the immediate need of immediate access from back of curb, but doesn't resolve the issue of the ability for the city public works and utility departments to get to the utilities that are within the right-of-way.
And those utilities are used not just for this residence, but for uphill that goes on a private drive, it looks like, way up in the hill? In other words, the utility isn't just for this home?
Correct, it's for this subdivision.
Which is a challenge, because it is more than just for one place. Other, anyone else would like to come up for a public?
Before she leaves, Mayor, if I could, please?
Go ahead.
If you would stay, I want you to help interpret one of our images. Holly, it's page 267, image 260, it's page 267 of our packet, and it's like a fisheye lens picture, there's a white, looks like SUV-type vehicle in the driveway, and plus the truck, if you're able to pull that one up. And it's, it's, well, it's amid all the, amidst all the images that we have, and you'll see, it's one of the first pictures of the home.
It's the Google Street View.
Yeah, that's what it is, yep, thanks, Matt.
Oh, I'm happy to go help her, I just gonna have to, she had to pull it from the packet.
It's this one.
Yep, that's the one, Mayor. Oh, she doesn't have it in the PowerPoint, oh. Okay. Okay, well, I can be patient, if the rest of us can be, if she has access to it.
Well, the challenge is that page in the packet is not part of the presentation.
Okay, so, then can we have our property use consultant come up and take a look at this picture to interpret it for us? Okay, you have it there, thank you, Michael. So, that Google Streets view, right? So, we have that white SUV vehicle, are you seeing that?
Yes.
Okay, so, in relation to the nine-and-a-half feet and that vehicle, how far back is roughly, right, is that vehicle compared to what the nine-and-a-half feet would be?
This would be based on my guesstimate based on the image.
That's fine.
But the fence is approximately, you see where the concrete strip is?
Yep.
And I can be correct if I'm wrong, that's roughly where the fence is.
Okay.
That fence is still at least three feet away from the property line. So, I would say that's in between that concrete strip and the white vehicle.
So, just in front of that palm tree on the left in the landscaping is kind of what the other views are, so it's not far from where that, the rear tire of that white SUV is. And the reason I ask that, and if I read the code correctly, the setbacks can vary based on the size of the lot, is that fairly accurate?
With fences, they can be right up on the property line if they meet certain conditions. So, in the front yard, you can have a fence that's four feet high, right on, and you can have that fence right on the property line.
Okay, well, you know, I'm a little, okay, I don't have any other questions, thank you, I'll wait for discussion. Is that, does your interpretation of the distance align with what our guesstimate is?
Yes, I understand where the edge going towards the front of the property, the edge of the right-of-way is, and the drawing that we submitted for a solution is to move that portion of the fence that is right at the back of the curb along that landscape area to move it back behind the palm trees and curve it, just like you see in that concrete strip on this photo.
Yeah, I think I understood that, I was just trying to grasp the distance in the actual driveway portion.
Yes, yes, so moving the fence back to the edge of that right-of-way, including the gates, would make that eyebrow driveway not usable.
Not an eyebrow anymore, yeah.
Right, it's not an eyebrow anymore.
Okay.
We did, when we came in and talked with Public Works, they did pull up a drawing of the estimated location of where that, it's a power line that's in that portion of the right-of-way, and it, given improvements that might require digging, you know, a much wider hole to get to those, to get to that power line, there's really only a portion of the existing fence at the, I don't know my directions here, as you're looking at the house on the right side, where that fence is closest to that power line. But even at the back of the curb, right now, it doesn't conflict with the exception of that very small area on the right side of the fence.
I don't have any other questions, Mayor. Okay, thank you.
This would be a Brittany, do we have something that we can, where she talked about a bond, in case they have to dig it up, do we have anything like that? If they left the driveways in and moved the rest back, is there some way to facilitate a bond?
The city hasn't entered into that type of agreement, in my, that I'm aware of, ever. I can't speak to other jurisdictions, and if they have that type of agreement, certainly you can enter into an agreement for that type of thing, that's definitely possible. I haven't heard of it, though, this is the first I've heard of it, yeah.
But we don't have anything.
We haven't done that in the past, that's not to say it's not possible and that other jurisdictions don't do it, but it's not something that we've done.
Mayor Hardy?
Go ahead.
In addition, there's another consideration with Southwest Gas, they also have a gas line in that right-of-way.
So, I've got electricity and gas, and let me ask it this way, I'm not as concerned about the right-of-way as the utilities that are underneath that are in the right-of-way. I mean, so, you know, we can figure out what a right-of-way does, but we can't change where the gas and the electric are. And so, anything that we do has to protect the gas and the electric. And, you know, we can talk about how many feet, but the bottom line is, as you point out, you can't dig a trench as much as you have to give a working place. But that's, and it supplies the gas and electric in that area, then?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Would also like to point out for council's benefit, our code does require certain findings to be made for a variance. The planning commission has made findings, if the city council chooses to affirm the planning commission's decision, they can use the planning commission's findings. If the city council chooses to reverse or modify the planning commission's decision, new findings have to be made. Those are listed in the staff report, and they are outlined in section 1132.4 of our code. Essentially, the council has to consider whether there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property or its intended use that do not apply generally to other property or classes of use in the same vicinity and zone. Number two, the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right possessed by other property in the same vicinity and zone, but which is denied to the property in question. Number three, granting of such variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare, injurious to the property, or improvements in such vicinity and zone in which the property is located. Four, the granting of this variance will not adversely affect or be contrary to the comprehensive plan. And finally, five, conditions or situations of the specific piece of property or the intended use of said property for which the variance is sought is not of so general or recurrent a nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of a general regulation of such conditions or situations.
Yeah, I just have one more question. So, typically, in this situation, when someone goes to put in a fence, is that something that requires a, them to come in with the building department every single time when something of this nature is, and get it approved?
That is correct.
Okay, so, something of this nature is supposed to be brought in and approved prior? Okay, thank you.
I think it's unfortunate that this fence was put up without a permit, so that you knew where the right-of-way should have been. And my concern is, if we allow one, then we start a slippery slope of allowing somebody else to do it, and then somebody else to do it, and then we have a mess around Boulder City, because I'm sure there's other people that'd like to have their fence out to, right to the edge of the street. So, that's my biggest concern, is that we start something that we can't stop by allowing the variance. So, that's my concern.
And Mayor Hardy, if maybe you could conclude the public hearing, and then?
So, I ask, is there anyone else who would like to participate in the public hearing, either here or online, on telephone, which is 702-589-9629? And if there's a respectable amount of time to see if somebody wants to call in, is there anyone here in the room that would like to come forward in the public hearing and say something that this would be a good time to do? 702-789-9629 is the phone call-in. Seeing none, close the public hearing, bring it back to council. And discussion.
I've got some questions of staff for the discussion.
Okay.
I think we're done with questions for our consultant, right?
Right.
Probably have a seat, thank you.
Sure.
When there's a utility right-of-way, help me understand the general.
Thank you.
Limitation, so, as I informally understand it, you can put hardscape like concrete or landscape over it with the understanding that if the utility needs service, it's going to be dug up and you have to bear the cost of the replacement? Is that accurate?
Yes, in our code, I mean, generally, when there's an encroachment upon city property, you can apply for an encroachment permit, and then there's certain terms within that. For residential properties, we do, in our code, provide that the person can have landscape within the public right-of-way, but it's their obligation to maintain it.
Okay, and so, in this instance, it's the property of the city in this case, because it's in the right-of-way. If this were down another portion of their property, let's say the side of their yard or something heading from front to back, and they wanted to concrete that or landscape it, that's possible, they just can't put a fixed structure over it, is that correct?
Well, it's always subject to whatever utilities are in place alongside yards, and so that's something that staff evaluates if they're proposing improvements. But the general rule is, is that fences along property lines, as long as city can have access to those utilities, is acceptable alongside yards. But the concern in this case is the front yard prohibiting access to the potential utilities.
Okay, I think that answers my questions, that's, those are the only questions I have. I will engage in the discussion here further, but I'll yield the floor.
Any other?
The planning commission has denied this after, probably wasn't a short little meeting, and the planning commission likewise, seven to zero. Looking at the utility issue, I think, is what's driving the challenge for us as opposed to the property line, it's what's underneath the property that the city has, the utility right-of-way. I can see why they built it the way they did, as far as access to the front of the house. And as I look at it, it would change a circular driveway to just a straight driveway, as opposed to making a turn, although conceivably, depending on if you did a gate this way, you could have room for the one car to go, but certainly not two cars to go on a more perpendicular gate than a horizontal gate, I'll call it, and still have a gate. I'm in a mood to move myself that we sustain the planning commission's denial.
Mayor Hardy?
Yep.
Subject to the findings contained within the staff report?
Correct.
Well, they are the.
They're findings in the planning commission.
The planning commission's findings.
They're subject.
Contained in the staff report.
Right. So, that is the planning commission's findings, the planning commission's decision. So, I would move to sustain the planning commission's findings and decision as a denial.
Should I second that?
Politically, I don't know, but.
It's such a beautiful fence, but, like I said, I think it's a slippery slope, because other people would want to do the same thing.
Did you second that motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded discussion.
Just, it's an unfortunate and costly mistake, it is a beautiful fence, but, yeah, I agree with you guys.
Any other discussion?
I've got a question of staff again, so, had this come to a building permit circumstance and staff's evaluation, including the utility department, in essence, we're saying that that evaluation has occurred just after the fact, and therefore, in our report also, it says utilities does not support the variance, correct?
Correct.
So, the utility department has done their evaluation of the potential for a variance and are not supportive of the variance, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Other discussion?
I mean, I think the exact same thing, unfortunately, whether processes were understood that it needed to come to the building department or not, because it didn't, then decisions were made that could have been, could have been, you know, avoided, I guess I want to say, so that when it did come, they would have been able to know that that would not have worked. And it is beautiful, it's not that that we're talking about, it's actually the usability for utilities, and I agree with Councilwoman Booth, the slippery slope that could be opened if we start making variance on a large scale.
Any other discussion? Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It was unanimous to support the planning commission's findings and decision. Thank you. That brings us to item thirteen, city council appointments to the historic preservation commission.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're requesting action of the city council to appoint two members to the historic preservation commission. We have several members of the community who are interested in this, two of them being Denise Ashhurst and Donna O'Shaughnessy, who are currently serving unexpired terms, which will end at the end of August. And these matters you can take together separately, and this would be to serve a three-year appointment ending August 31st, 2027.
So these people who are currently appointed to fill an unexpired term, in their unexpired term, when is their unexpired term?
Specifically, Denise Ashhurst was appointed on August 8th, 2023, to fill an unexpired term, which ends August 31st, 2024. And Donna O'Shaughnessy was appointed on January 23rd of this year to fill the unexpired term ending 8/31/24.
So they are in essence sitting members of the historic preservation committee right now?
At this moment, yes.
Okay. Discussion or questions?
Are you ready for nominations?
Yeah.
I'll nominate Denise Ashhurst as a member of the historic preservation commission.
I second that.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Hold on.
You'd have to close nominations.
Unless there are no further nominations, so it just, if you would just ask-
Ask if there are any further nominations.
So do we do this nomination and then we'll do another nomination after this?
Yes, each, one seat at a time, yeah.
So Denise Ashhurst has been nominated. Close that nomination. And that was seconded.
Are there any other nominations? If there's not, she's appointed by acclamation.
Nominations. If there are no other nominations, then it's done.
It's done.
Okay, so Denise has been continued.
Correct.
Okay, and that opens up the other person who's serving, Donna O'Shaughnessy. Is there any nomination on that position?
I'll nominate Norma Valley.
Can I nominate somebody too?
Yeah.
I'd like to nominate Donna O'Shaughnessy.
Okay, so Donna O'Shaughnessy, who's currently serving, and Norma Valley, who was here earlier this evening, has been nominated. I can just call for a vote.
No, is there any other nominations?
Other nominations.
And you can close nominations and then vote on each one?
I will close nominations, and we will vote on Donna O'Shaughnessy. All those in favor of Donna O'Shaughnessy continuing to be on the historic preservation committee, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So that is a four to one. Donna O'Shaughnessy has thus been nominated to continue, and-
And we need a vote for Norma Valley, please.
And I will, so we've already appointed that.
You still have to vote on each one.
So Donna- You can't vote twice.
Donna O'Shaughnessy received four votes, then you'll hold a vote on Norma Valley.
So even though somebody has a majority, that doesn't mean anything. Okay, so I will open the vote for Norma Valley to be appointed to the historic preservation. And all those who are in favor of Norma Valley to be nominated to the historic preservation committee, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. And that again is four to one. Correct?
Correct.
And that item is now done. Okay? And that brings us to bill draft request number fourteen. And I would note that we have a lobbyist in the room present, if he's interested in what we're talking about.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Item fourteen before you is discussion in possible direction regarding the bill draft requests for the 2025 legislative session. As you may know, our Nevada legislature meets every two years to revise and update the Nevada state laws, including those impacting local government. Boulder City has allotted one bill draft request each year by state law. In addition, we are able to pursue other state law changes by seeking a bill sponsor. City staff is seeking direction on the general topic for our BDR and any other BDRs the city council wishes to pursue. In the past, we've used our bill draft request to seek funding for the Nevada State Rail Museum located here. And while that bill did not pass, the city was successful in securing funding. Last session, we sought to amend the redevelopment agency chapter to allow the city to remove residential property from the redevelopment area, and it was successful. The city has retained Warren Hardy of Hardy Strategies as our lobbyist for the upcoming legislative session and in the interim. Warren is the principal consultant with over thirty years of frontline experience at all levels of government, including serving in both the Nevada Assembly and Senate for the districts representing Boulder City. And Mr. Hardy is here to assist in answering any questions and providing any insight on the Nevada legislative session. For the bill draft request, there are a couple of ideas that have been put forth. One of those ideas is to pursue a legislative change with regard to the Nevada PERS laws. As we discussed in previous council meetings, there are times when individuals would be qualified for a position within our local government, but due to, but our retired PERS employees, and there is a prohibition on a public employee returning to the Nevada PERS system. There's not a similar prohibition for out-of-state employees collecting a pension. And some have discussed this as possibly missed opportunity for especially the smaller rural local governments to have qualified, experienced individuals within the state apply for certain positions in our smaller jurisdictions due to this prohibition, that if there were an exception to that prohibition for those individuals, that we could not only benefit as a community from having that expertise and experience, but the state would benefit as well in that under a proposed exception, we wouldn't be, unlike the critical shortage exception where the person reenters PERS and begins paying the, paying the contributions, this person would not reenter PERS to pay the contribution. So it would actually be a savings to local government as well under this proposed change. So this is something we could use our BDR to seek or seek a bill sponsor. Also, the Nevada legislature pursuant to our city charter, the Nevada legislature is able to amend the city charter and does in certain circumstances. For example, when we moved to the general election cycle, the Nevada legislature amended our charter so that those provisions were consistent. That is something we could do, of course. We would recommend engaging the charter commission pursuant to our code, the seven-member board, to look at the charter to see really what needs to be updated from a city staff perspective. We wouldn't believe anything substantive needs to be updated, but some of the language is inconsistent and outdated with current city practice. And we could use the charter commission's advice in looking at that and to see what needs to be updated and perhaps update it through the legislature. And then if council tonight has any other ideas that on state laws you'd like to see change, you know, we can discuss that as well.
Someone have any ideas?
I have one.
Are we allowed to do two or we have to just do one?
The city has allotted one bill draft request, but if there's other ideas, we could pursue a bill sponsor, asking perhaps one of our delegation to carry a bill for us or another legislator or committee.
Because I like both of these, and I like the one about PERS because being rural, it is hard to get somebody out here. And we have quite a few positions that are open that could possibly help us with something like this. And so I think that's a great one, but I also would like to see our charter updated too. So if there was any way to get two, that would be the price of one.
Can we not amend the charter with multiple things in the charter?
On our own?
Former Senator Hardy would probably tell me, why in the world would you dare open the charter? But I think he's coming up to say something.
If it ain't broke, don't fix it, Mayor. Warren Hardy with Warren Hardy Strategies. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, and thank you, Brittany. Answering Councilwoman Booth's question, yes, we can go for as many bill drafts as we want. We have one that will be the city, you know, the Boulder City bill draft. That's been allotted to us by statute. I actually, in my career, rarely suggest that we use that bill draft for most issues. The issue with the PERS, I think, is one that fits nicely in that, because I think there will be support for it. I would then go to our delegation. With regard to changing our charter, the only restriction on legislation is it has to be germane to the topic. So really, when you introduce a piece of legislation that deals with your charter, you can make any changes within that same, you don't need separate bill drafts for each change. You can make ten changes, you can make one, you can make fifty changes. I will say this, just between us friends, I know this isn't on the record. We have some, we do have some legislators sometimes that meddle in charters where they probably shouldn't. So that's something that should be considered when you open your charter, the understanding that there are some legislators that may have a feeling that they want to make changes across all charters and may take that opportunity to meddle in your charter a little bit. I always, I chaired the Senate Government Affairs Committee, and I always took the position that that should be up to the city council. The one thing I always request is that to the extent possible, whatever we take to Carson City is unanimous among the council. The last thing you want to do is take your internal fights to Carson City. So that's the only thing I would say. I would say if you're going to open your charter, make sure it's worth opening, but you can make whatever changes.
Great advice, thank you.
So I have to say that that is not just great advice.
Excellent.
I've sat in those meetings where the charter is opened and legislators feel like they're going to change your charter for you.
Take that off.
And it becomes a challenge.
Sorry, I do have a question. Just I know that you, we talked about the railroad funding. Do we have ongoing funding for that and for the project that's going forward? Or is that something we need to look at again? Or is that a solved and done deal?
It's my understanding that there is ongoing funding for that project, of course. Every legislative session, everything's on the table. So we will strive to ensure that that funding continues and is included in the governor's budget.
Okay, because that's definitely something that I would like to see included and kept going, so we don't have a half-funded, half-done project that's been started here in Boulder City. As far as the PERSable option, I honestly think that that might be a nice option. We've kind of talked about it in a roundabout way when it came to the city manager position. There are definitely some things that are different about being in a small rural community but next to a very large metropolis that, you know, takes up and entices some of our talent. So there is a problem there with that. I'm not in favor of the charter, to be honest.
So we, to clarify, we can do a PERS law that allows a person who's already done his PERS duties and be rehired in a different entities and not go back into the PERS system, but still would be able to accept his PERS that he's already earned or she's already earned. We could do that without changing a charter?
Yes, yes. The NRS would be, I believe it's two eighty-six, and it would essentially allow another exception for the prohibition on retired employees working for another Nevada public employer. And it would seek that exception explicitly for small jurisdictions like Boulder City and for high-level positions like department head or higher.
So how would that relate to a city manager?
That would include a city manager.
And would that, would we change that A, B, C, D, E?
No, no, we wouldn't be touching the critical labor shortage exception. That would be a separate exception. We're seeking a new exception for small local governments.
And so we wouldn't have to make five findings if we ended up with a city manager who had been, who we would like to have a city manager that had done a PERS position already?
Correct. The idea is that local governments have a hard time recruiting and retaining individuals that have a lot of experience in Nevada, in our state. And with this exception, we could recruit and retain possibly an individual who's worked in Nevada, who has that longevity and proven to provide good results within Nevada, to come to the smaller jurisdictions and help us and stay in the smaller areas.
You have thoughts?
Couple of questions. Does it have to be, well, I guess we can decide, but I think we've got positions all up and down from building official to lineman to higher-level department heads and above. Do we have to include some limitation for its palatability? Or would that be in consultation with our lobbyist on its potential favorable view?
Thank you, Your Honor.
And it would be tied to population. So really, you can just utilize it to hire whoever you need to hire. And I will say politically, you never know how this stuff's going to go. I don't see a downside. I don't see anything negative about opening up the chapter. I do see some positives this particular election cycle. The entire state is struggling with manpower and being able to hire folks. And so there will be support, I believe, from other small cities for this legislation. So no, I wouldn't limit it to certain positions. We'll just say if you're a population under a certain amount, and you know, Councilwoman Georgerson brought up such an important point, you just have to be engaged if you're a small city in a big county because you just get run over. And so the pop caps, which were, you know, not used for a long time in the legislation, the population caps are now being used again, and that's the only limitation I would put on it. And I think that would be sufficient. And I would strongly argue against utilizing the critical shortage current in statute for this, because I believe calls that entire thing potentially into question. So this really is, I think, politically, practically, again, you never know. I mean, I put a clause in all my contracts that I don't control decision-makers because I was one one time and you can't trust them. I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
Second question. If we go down the charter road, is there the possibility of saying, we want section X and L and M looked at only? Or is it the entire charter and we get what we get?
Yeah, if you do the charter, you absolutely can say, this is our recommendation. And, you know, I think, you know, potentially, it just depends. I mean, and I'm not going to mention the legislator who mingles, but he knows who he is. He's probably going to call me in the morning if he listens to this. But I will say, he did help me get a couple of charters passed. So, you know, it's not that he's not asking helpful questions. It's just, if you're going to open your charter, just make sure it's something you really need.
So the whole thing is open?
The whole thing's open. You can't, here's what you can control, sort of, if it's your- it's your bill draft, or if it's a bill draft of a legislator. And if you do that, I would recommend a legislator, because they can pull the bill. Once we open it, if it's our bill, we don't really control it anymore. I mean, Brittany's got marvelous relationships up there. I do. We could probably get it pulled if it goes sideways on us, but it's just, you don't know. You don't know. The legislature's very aggressive about the fact that they can... There's not a home rule state, and that they control our charters. So, make it worth it, is what I'm saying.
So, a wise course of action, if we like both of these unanimously, right, after we have our discussion, would potentially be the population cap on the PERS employment coming from this body and finding a legislator to take our charter request forward, so that we can enact that. Never mind, we'll pull in the pellet chute and jump in out of this one.
Yeah. And again, Warren Hardy, for the record, I would really like to see what those... As I understand it, your charter commission's not even met at this point. So, that can be a process, too. That fact that the charter commission hasn't met tells me two things. There's not a massive glaring problem with your charter. And so, if you do... I would recommend that you take a look during the next interim at your charter. It's a good idea to have your charter commission meet regularly, because we will get that question from time to time from Government Affairs Committee, "Has your charter commission met?" And most people follow the procedure that I did, most of the chairman that I did, and that is, if you bring me a request, we'll give you what you want, but make sure the charter commission has reviewed it and passed it, and the council's voted unanimously. So, it doesn't sound to me like there's a glaring issue with the charter. So, I would be a little more patient with that one, probably, and not open it for no good reason. Because, again, it's not going to target... It's unlikely that anybody's going to target Boulder City. It's going to... Potential that a legislator's going to say, "I want to affect this across the charters." And so, once that statute's open, they can... As legislators, they can always introduce their own bill. But, again, I just think, if you want to make changes, if you need to make changes to your charter, I'd take a more deliberative approach to it during the interim and go back next session with that request. But I would do it through a legislator, yes. And I think this PERS thing is ideal for your Boulder City request.
Great.
So, to clarify, when we open our charter, it opens up other people's discussions.
So, thank you, Mayor Warren Hardy, again, for the record. Because we have our own charter, it only opens our charter. If we were a general law city and it opened Chapter 266, then it opens for all of the general law cities. But in this case, we have our own charter within statute. So, from a germaneness perspective, it only opens our charter, I think.
Let's just pretend we're in Boulder City. To your point, we open up our charter, and there's a legislator who may not think we are fully participant in everything that we should do and be. And not that they exist, but we would find ourselves potentially in trouble.
It always turns into a horse.
Yeah, yeah.
I find the concern in that area, that we pride ourselves here in Boulder City on our charm, our uniqueness, who we are. And because of that, we allow, if we do that, someone who doesn't maybe understand that uniqueness, or what we value here, or why we feel things are certainly important, to open that up to something that they may think should be important here. We may not necessarily have the same thought process.
And again, experientially, you can be held hostage. If you don't do this, then we will do this to you, as opposed to for you. And that's real, as nice of people as those people are.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm beating up on our former colleagues, but the overwhelming majority of them want to do what's right for Boulder City and for the individual. It doesn't always happen. And I also want to be clear, that if a legislator on their own wants to open our charter, they can. And they don't have to have our permission to do it. But, yeah, I just think charter stuff, you go with charters when you have major things that need to be addressed, as a rule. Fix a little stuff in there, too, at the same time.
So, we could do our PERS law opportunity to hire back talent that may want to participate without having to go through the onerous things of findings with critical workforce shortage.
I support that direction.
I do, too.
I have an idea.
Okay.
If you like those two, I think you guys are really going to like mine.
Oh, good.
Brittany, I've been... I've bugged you about this on more than several occasions. I would like to see if we can make the radius bigger for registered sex offenders around our schools. I know if you look at Avenue B, where our middle and elementary schools are, where I guess both elementary school and high school and middle school, they're all right next to each other, but there are quite a few, more than I think anyone would like. So, I'd like to see that radius of registered sex offenders be bigger to keep them away from our schools and our children. So, hopefully, that would be possible.
The residency restrictions are in NRS, too. 13 and 176A, there's a restriction of 1,000 feet for Tier 3 sex offenders, and I believe just a general 500 feet where children are typically present for the rest, and that's in state law.
So, that could be brought to the...
That can be a suggested change, yes.
Okay. Now, is that something we can make? We could give the distance, say, like, four miles?
Let's just go 20.
Four miles would...
As far as you can drive a...
No, that's only two miles.
Oh, that's two miles.
A four-mile radius would... That'd be, you know...
That would be four miles.
I mean, it definitely would impact not just Boulder City, right? This would impact jurisdictions across the state, and I think it would be prudent to ensure that we're discussing any proposed increase with them to see what their thoughts are and if they're supportive. I do know, just tangentially from working at the legislature and going to a lot of Assembly Judiciary hearings, that things like this have been discussed before, and I do know that there are a lot of restrictions on where sex offenders can go, to the point where it's a real issue, that they cannot find a place to live. I know the Department of Prole and Probation, I've talked to, it's so limited on where they can go when they get out, that there are a lot of people who can't find places to live. So, just throwing that out there, but it is absolutely something we could pursue. It's something we could also pursue, not even with our... We could get a bill sponsor for that. We could also just look... A lot of bills tend to have those chapters open, clarifying different things, and so, we could also look for an opportunity at the legislature to bring that up with another bill and say, you know, "Should this be increased?" and et cetera.
Yeah, I would love to see that, because, again, you know, them finding places to live, there's consequences to their actions. They shouldn't fall on our kids, you know, "Hey, so-and-so can't live three blocks from the school because they did something bad to a child."
If I may, Your Honor, let me just give you some political background on this legislatively and why it's a struggle, because you hear what Brittany says, and it's absolutely true. The Legislature Judiciary Committee can be very reluctant to make changes, and that seems crazy, right? We want to protect our children. We want to have sex offenders away from our children. But when you get beyond that statement, there are other factors. And I dealt with, in my time in the legislature, with the definition of a sex offender. And some of the people that have the designation as a sex offender were very minor, minimal offenses years ago, you know, childhood pranks, that they've got attached, sex offender to their... But when we try to be tougher on the definition, or more specific on the definition, people don't want to do that either. It's something the legislature doesn't touch. So, as a result, it's a hard legislative thing where you wouldn't think it would be. Everybody wants to protect our children, but that's going to be the challenge with that kind of legislation, is the stories are going to come forward of the guy who exposed himself to his classmates in junior high school and is now a registered sex offender, and those types of stories that make it difficult. But nobody wants to change that definition, right? We don't want to be soft on sex offenders. So, it's more fraught politically with challenges than it seems on the surface. And I think it would be, as Brittany said, I do think it would be a difficult discussion at the legislature. The question I asked her is, "Can we do something by ordinance?" I'm not an attorney, but I guess we...
We're preempted.
Yeah, so we're preempted. And that's why, because of these issues, it's difficult.
You said level... Oh, I'm sorry. You said level three sex offenders. So, do we have levels?
That's exactly what I was going to ask, about the different tiers, you know, can we make it...
Yeah, there are tiers. Those are those that have been convicted of a sex crime involving a minor under age of 14. But again, the definitions of sex crimes are extremely broad, and that's, you know, that's, of course, your mind would think the worst thing, but sometimes they can be innocu... Not innocuous, but things that aren't as serious as they sound. So, I mean, it's like Warren was saying, it is tricky, because the net that you cast captures more than just the worst of the worst, you know?
Right, but if you don't cast a net at all, you don't catch anyone.
Well, I mean, there are restrictions for them.
Reality, but the 500 feet is...
Well, it's 1,000 feet for the Tier 3. The others are 500.
Yeah, that's really not very big, if you really think about it. And I guess I tend to also believe that I recognize that maybe the definition, that that would be the exception, I think, maybe not the rule, right? That in that net, you catch some people, that it really shouldn't be applied to them. That's an exception, not a rule. I recognize it would be hard for them to find housing. I recognize that those are problems, too. But it's only one mistake by having someone close or one incident that makes that even larger in my mind's eye. So, I'm just... I think I'm a little shocked at 500 feet or 1,000 feet. I am a little shocked by that.
And I would say, and I don't want you to misunderstand what I'm saying, philosophically, I'll go argue for that all day long and twice on Sunday. I just need to help you understand what the barriers will be legislatively. And there will be opportunities. These issues come up every session. This chapter of NRS is open every session. There will be opportunities for us to go meet with legislators and say, "There's a huge appetite in Boulder City to increase this," and see if we can build support for that. But in order to do that, we're going to want to build a more global support and have conversations with legislative leadership internally to try to address it in a targeted way.
Right. I don't know if it could be our legislative bill, per se, because I hear what you're saying, that the chances of support of that nature, it will lay flat, most likely. But if we could go and attach it to another, or something of like-mindedness, and then find support within other communities that might also come in with those same issues, I wouldn't mind it being addressed. In fact, I would really love to see it.
Possibility, you could use a population cap there as well. So, and just so you understand the process, Brittany and I talk daily during the legislative session. Every piece of legislation goes to Brittany and staff. We talk about it. We look at it. If there's opportunities to submit amendments, we propose amendments all the time on behalf of Boulder City to the legislature. Usually, it's saying, "Leave us alone. We don't want to be included." But it also, you know, if there's something we want to add, there'll be those opportunities. And we can send a strong message that this is something that the city's interested in and cares a lot about.
Is there a population cap per capita of how many Tier 3 sex offenders can be per population?
That's probably...
No, yeah. There is a limit that more than three can't reside at one location, but that's...
Maybe that's something to look at.
Yeah.
Even within there, too.
Well, what we can do, I mean, I think we could approach the delegation for Boulder City as well, and bring this to their attention as an issue, to see if they would be interested in pursuing it, you know, as one of their bills, Assembly of McGowan or Senator Stone, and see if that's something they want to do.
And you're also a member of the League of Cities, who I understand has some BDRs, although the deadline's approaching. That's probably, it may be too late, but that's an area we could... That way, it's a more global approach. But, yeah, no, 100%, we can shop that idea and look for a place to put it.
I think it's important to realize that anybody can talk to anybody who's a legislator and say, "This is my idea." And a legislator will have, what, a brand-new assembly person gets five the moment they're elected, and the senator gets 10. And so, they literally have BDRs that they can... I mean, we can... Any one of us can pick up the phone and say, "This is what I'm concerned about." And then, depending on what they want to do or what they don't want to do. But that's... Strangely enough, legislators don't think of all the ideas all by themselves.
I had one good idea in eight years, and that was it. You'd be surprised at how many ideas to... Mayor Hardy, I want to call him Senator Hardy, Senator Mayor Dr. Hardy, to his point, overwhelming majority of ideas come from constituents for legislators. So, yeah, it's absolutely true.
So, I mean, I don't want to have the council get in the way of having to meet in an open meeting and discuss, you know, how many different bill drafts we have, as much as what do we have that we need, or that we want, that can do. And I think that particular one would be difficult to predict what's going to happen, as opposed to a population cap that looks at PERS talent. That, I think, is doable. I think we could actually get something done there that we've talked before about, you know, a workforce shortage that had... It's different issues, but if we did a pop cap and did something like that, I think it'd pass.
And I just want to be clear. I would never try to talk the city or council members from going after hard issues and tough issues, but my job is to advise you on what that political landscape of that would look like, and just to advise you of some of the things that would be brought up with regard to that. And it's just not as politically clear as it should be. Let me put it that way, because there are issues in there that get in the way, because there are lots of legislators who advocate for victims' rights. There's also a lot of legislators that advocate for the rights of those who have been accused. And so, it's a balance. Never saying we shouldn't make the argument and engage in the fight, but you sit there without looking at the legislative... or understanding completely the legislative... Not you, but individuals without completely understanding the legislative process and say, "My wife says this to me all the time. What? That's just common sense. What's wrong with the legislature? That's just common sense." And it's all the issues. And I always tell her, "Honey, just let me handle that part," and then I sleep on the couch for three days. No, I'm kidding. I don't say that to her.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say, for my part, then, I would love to see us go for the hiring, but with the strong understanding that when you're in there, there is some serious concerns regarding that. And if at any time, place, moment, person, you had the opportunity to insert, that it would be nice to relook at that, whether it be for rural communities with a population cap, or with a cap for... cap or with a cap for feet, feet, miles, whatever we want to call it, with the understanding that that is a desire.
You have my commitment and I will report back to you when that happens, because it will. It'll come out and we will make, we will strongly make the point that that's something Boulder City would like to see changed in the statute.
Fantastic, because I don't want it to look like we went for the easier bill, but I do want it to be known, because I agree with you, engaging in the fight sometimes is the only way things change. And it may not always be easy to engage in the fight, but some fights are worth it.
It's rarely easy to get the good stuff done.
What I hear the good councilwoman saying is she's willing to go to the legislature and testify.
Sure.
And that's the key. So we can do that. And if our people tell us what's on the docket and what, you can do it. And you can do it. And each one of us can do whatever. So it's not uncommon at all for real people to go up or wherever even to the building, the new building downtown now and testify. And we have that privilege. Anybody can do it.
And we'll flag that issue on our tracking. You know, normally not something we'd put in tracking for the city. We'd probably do it for your police department, but we will track that for the city. And when these opportunities come up, we'll bring them back and have a conversation about how to approach it. And we will make those recommendations. We will recommend those amendments 100%.
Other comments, questions, worries, woes? Is there, is there a feeling of which direction we want to go by way of a motion, for instance, on the PERS?
I'll make a motion that we go with the PERS employees to benefit the city.
Okay. I'll second.
Moved into seconded discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you and thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to city manager's report.
Nothing unusual to report.
And that brings us to our financial report.
Nothing unusual to report.
And that brings us to public comment. And that would be a call in at 702-589-20, 9629, 589-9629. And if you are not calling in, you should start now because somebody is here who's willing to have public comment and allow you the time to call in, because by the time we're done here, it's probably done. The whole world is before you for five minutes.
Mayor Hardy, councilmembers, mayors.
I'm sure most of anybody who's watching heard my speech during the last Historic Preservation Society meeting. I'm here to kind of reiterate...
Could you say your name for the record?
Yes, sorry. My name is Brandon Smith. I am an owner of historic property here in town. And my fight, my current fight is to make the Bureau of Reclamation responsible for the site that they have given us in contradiction to their renderings and what they were supposed to deliver to us. Since that meeting, I've kind of take it upon myself to think a little further than just the eyesore that the site is. I've engaged the city residents at every opportunity, walking down the street, walking up the street, walking to my car, walking to a restaurant. And I haven't found too many individuals that are in favor of the mess that the city was handed for that site. There have been maybe three people who have said, well, look, we do live in a desert. What's wrong with a bunch of rocks? You know, and then I start a rant. I received a thermal camera today and have only had the chance to play with it very minimally. At 11 o'clock this morning, I took picture of the building from the park across the street where it showed the shady grass at somewhere about 74 degrees. And the moral majority, at least the highest temperature recorded by the camera while I was facing the BOR building, was approximately 120 degrees. That was at 11 o'clock this morning before the heat of the day got really kicking. I took another photo at about 4 o'clock, which indicated that the thermal signature of the site was at 150 degrees. I'm very curious to get home and pull that camera back out and see what it looks like at 9 o'clock at night after the sun settled. And the sun is gone, so obviously there'll be some sort of radiant heat signature left over from the heat of the day. And I'm curious to know a couple of things. During the presentations that I attended before any of this work started, I don't recall the Bureau mentioning any sort of thermal pollution being introduced as a result of whatever they ended up building. And because their rendering was so different from what we actually got, I wonder if that was even a consideration in their mind, because like, I mean, we all know that ice in very small pieces melts very quickly, but hey, you want a whiskey on a big rock ball? Well, that's what you're going to get and you're still going to have cold whiskey two hours from now because the ice hasn't melted. Well, it works the same way in opposite. So if they had given us our rendering, which had very small rocks, pellets, crushed rock, whatever you want to call it, versus good-sized chunks of rock and massive boulders, I would think that the heat signature would be much different than it is now, in addition to obviously planting more mature trees and yada, yada, yada. Additionally, I walked the site today as I began taking some of these photos. I noticed that the eight benches that are scattered across the site, at least half of them have no tree within 20 radial feet of the bench itself. And the remaining ones had a tree that was maybe, you know, seven to 12 feet away, but it'll be years before those trees are big enough to provide any sort of shade whatsoever. So whereas we, our previous site had these gorgeous massive trees with enormous amounts of shade underneath them, so that people who wanted to walk over there and enjoy a picnic under a tree in the shade could. Now we've got eight benches that you couldn't sit on unless you have something below you because it will burn your buttocks. And there's not a lick of shade to enjoy there in any way, shape, or form. And I'm just, like I said, I'm just curious to know if they mentioned to the city that there would be any sort of thermal pollution that we should be worried about in regards to whatever they ended up putting there, whether it was a small, big, none, or in the case of the grass that they removed, obviously the grass...
Mr. Smith, we appreciate your concern.
I get it.
Your time's up, but we're not allowed to interface and answer those questions during public comment. That doesn't mean we don't care.
No, I know.
But thank you for coming.
I'm hoping to have that answer at some point from somebody.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have someone on the phone, Madam City Clerk.
Public comment?
Yes, good evening again. For the record, Fred Volz. The recent tragedy of a puppy being brutally tortured by an as-yet unknown perpetrator brings into sharp focus the problem of animal abuse in Boulder City as a gateway activity leading to child abuse and domestic partner abuse. This progression of heightened physical violence has been well documented through FBI statistics and other law enforcement agencies. Penalties for animal abuse and exploitation in the city's ordinances need to be toughened up significantly as a deterrent. If a child or senior had undergone similar abuse as did the puppy, there would be a hue and cry to do something. Too often, when it is deemed to be just an animal, there is no urgency. Our animals feel pain and abuse just as much as any person. Rather than promoting the rehiring of double-dipping retired public officials who may have been mediocre performers or lack the energy to perform adequately, the city and its lobbyists would be doing a far greater community service to promote more serious penalties at state level for any type of domestic animal or wildlife abuse. Even before calling on Boulder City's state legislators to promote higher penalties for animal abuse, neglect, and exploitation, the city council needs to take action on implementing an enforceable leash law similar to what every other incorporated city in Clark County has enacted for public and animal safety when in public spaces. Also needed is a severe limit on animal breeding activities in city limits and a clear legal delineation between dog breeder fancier activities and fostering activities. The city is long overdue in offering ongoing low-cost spay neuter clinics to lower the number of unwanted animals and an ongoing trap neuter release program for feral cats carelessly abandoned by irresponsible pet owners. We need mandatory microchipping to reunite owners and lost domestic animals and medically treat them with speed in emergency and injury situations. It is worth repeating the question brought to you consistently for months. When is this council going to prioritize the welfare and needs of its animal residents by agendizing all of the enumerated issues above rather than ignoring animal suffering, abuse, and neglect? As far as the discussion and decisions regarding golf course water use in the city's underwhelming water conservation efforts, you're living in denial about the dire state of our long-term water supply and no amount of sugar coating and triangulation will change the unassailable realities. Allocations mean nothing when there is no or drastically reduced supply. Please add these comments verbatim to the official minutes of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the phone line, 702-589-9629? And if there is anyone still here who wants to come forward, they're more than welcome to have public comment about anything that they would like to say. And seeing none, I will close public comment and go to city council's report. Councilwoman Booth, you want to start or you're in?
Just hope everybody has a safe and happy Labor Day. And I do hope that somebody will come forward and let us know who hurt number seven. And I hope they can call the hotline at the police department and identify that person because I think it is sad what happened. And I just hope somebody comes forward to let us know who it was.
Thank you.
I agree, but other than that, nothing to report.
Thank you.
Sometimes I think when we say we have nothing to report, it might mean that we didn't attend any board meetings or anything like that, but just to let you know, it doesn't mean that we're not answering phone calls from people who call in or meeting with people or going in seeking information to help Boulder City be a better place to live. A reminder, school started. I'm sure you can tell, but just a reminder, it might save you a ticket and it might definitely save a child's life. Last little comment is, I'm so thankful to live in a community where we choose quality of life over quantity of life. We have a Bureau of Reclamation building that is a symbol right now of maybe not equality per se. And so I'm thankful that we take on hard issues and we look at them really carefully to see how it's going to affect us in the long run. Sometimes their one solution becomes two problems. So thank you for all the comments people bring. Thank you for the care that you have for our community, from puppies to plants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate again all the comments we've received over the weeks via phone calls, emails, letters, et cetera. Really enjoy hearing from our community. Thank you, Councilmember Booth, for recognizing initially Labor Day is coming up. The first Monday in September is the traditional day for celebrating Labor Day. And it's the annual celebration of the social and economic achievements of the American workers, of which many are employed by Boulder City. And we appreciate all of our workers here in Boulder City and those who contribute to all of the infrastructure and the quality of life that we enjoy. So Happy Labor Day to all of you and hope you enjoy your weekend and your day off to commemorate those efforts. The Sunrise Rotary Worst Fest is the last Saturday of September. It'll be September 27th, 28th. Thank you for that calendar correction. Right here in Bicentennial Park and inclusive of Wilbur Square. We have a lot of great activities that will be going on there, so encourage everybody to consider setting aside some time on the 28th. There's some raffles of some amazing bikes and other products and great food and music and community interactions. So I encourage people to maybe set that aside on your calendar. Practices for our youth soccer season have begun. And as reported by Parks and Rec, it's the biggest program of the year with over 300 kids signed up to participate in our youth soccer program. And they'll start playing games the week of September 3rd, so right after Labor Day. Four nights a week at Pratt Field. Hundreds of people will be coming during every week to enjoy Veterans Park and all that the Parks and Rec sports offerings are in addition to all the other activities and commemorations we have at Veterans Park. So appreciate that. And I've said it before, I'll say it again, I think it's pertinent for all of us to consider the opening lines of Alexander Pope's poem on the essay on criticism. "A little learning is a dangerous thing; drink deep or taste not the Pyrrhian spring." There, shallow drafts intoxicate the brain and drinking deeply, drinking largely sobers us again. It's pertinent, I think, to our city council as we seek to drink from the Pyrrhian stream spring largely and understand the breadth and the depth of all the issues that we face and to come to wise decisions that are best for our community at large, not for us individually or any small group of people, but looking wisely for, out for our community, Boulder City. And I think this little essay on criticism does a great job of helping us keep focused on drinking deeply from the Pyrrhian spring. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. I would like to say thank you to the staff that we have. We are very blessed to have so many people who care. I come into the building periodically and there's always somebody here who's seeking help or wants to know an answer. And they're getting the help, they're getting the attention, and I just really appreciate our staff, our senior staff, and all the people who work for the city. I think we've been very blessed to have a sincerely helpful, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, brave, clean, and reverent staff. It's just a great, great place to live and appreciate all the support they give us in our city council assignments that go over the hill and so many different meetings that we attend and appreciate the opportunity we have to represent Boulder City, literally a shining example for so many things. And appreciate all of us as we go as citizens and as leaders to different places and recognize that people appreciate what we have and many of them say, I wish I lived in Boulder City. So thank you very much. This will conclude. This will conclude our city council report, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.